So now I just expect there will be more, more things like this coming. I will never say that's the last one. And we've got the fees for next year, which are unchanged also in the packet.
And I'll just add that Finance Subcommittee has been reviewing some programs throughout the year that we started in the fall. We did not get to every single one of them, but we did specifically look at the fees at our last meeting and agreed that there should be no change.
Great.
Do you, do we know if we should be reading the specific Blanchard motions?
I think we can say as, as printed in the, in the doc, in the, yeah, in the documents in the packet.
Okay. So motion to approve the consent agenda, including the wording for Blanchard Roof Replacement Project documents as worded in the packet.
Seconds.
Okay. Any last questions or comments? All in favor? Okay. That's approved six zero. Thank you. Next up is public comment. I'm going to switch over to Zoom. So, uh, public comment time. If anybody in the room would like to give public comment and come to the microphone, we welcome that. If anyone on Zoom would like to do the same, raise your hand in Zoom and we will invite you in. And we just asked you that you give us your name, your address, and keep your comments to two minutes to make sure everyone has enough time to comment if they would like. Jen, you coming up? You were the only wild card for me then. Like, maybe she's got something to say. Okay. We do have somebody on Zoom with, for public comment, so I'm going to bring Danielle in. It takes a second. Hi Danielle.
Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, go ahead. Thank you.
Um, Danielle Thompson. I'm at Forest Sunny Meadow Lane in Westford. I just had a couple comments on the, um, in the packet on the job description. I know you're going to have discussions, so I might already come up, but, um, I was reading some of the edits there and I was curious if there was any opposition to including the word inclusion somewhere in attributes and qualifications. I saw a natural kind of break where it might fit nicely in number one. Where it says for students, in order to create an inclusive environment where all students can thrive academically. Um, I just feel with the CPACs, one of the CPACs focused for the upcoming year is on inclusion. I think it would be important to at least have that word in the just job description somewhere, if not in the nature of, um, nature and scope of the job, at least in the qualifications and attributes.
Sure.
And then, uh, I'm not sure. I did send an email with some suggestions on responsibilities. I know it was around 11 o'clock today, so I don't expect any of you to have read it in full. But in the responsibilities, I know of, uh, one of the bigger pieces that I noticed that the word IEP, like Individualized Education Plan, um, I, I don't believe it was even mentioned in the responsibilities. And if I can flip back to the email that I sent. I believe like monitoring, um, like compliance with IEP timelines, data collection, progress reports and procedural safeguards. I know it's a really important piece of, it could be like, uh, you know, comply, a piece of compliance, but I just felt supervising and coordinating IEP procedures to ensure compliance or just even having the word IEP in there would be pretty important, in my opinion. So I just wanted to lay that out there for consideration.
Okay. We appreciate that. Thanks for looking at that. Thanks for your comments on that. We do have the email and like you said, we'll be taking it up in just a short while on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thanks Danielle. I'm going to send you back to attendee. If I can see it. Okay. Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none. Let's move on to our informational updates. We'll start with Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you. Uh, so we have a couple of exciting things to share about some of our students. So Alan Kwan is a junior at Westford Academy and he placed number one in his varsity age group in the New England Braille Challenge Regional Competition. I actually saw him a couple of weeks ago at WA and he was very excited telling me about what that meant. One of the things that I think is important here is that this isn't new for him. He's actually won five years in a row, which I think is fantastic. But this year, his score qualified him for the Nationals. So he's going to be going to the West Coast this summer. And he will have a chance. He's one of 10 Braille students in his age group in the United States that qualified. And it'll be in Los Angeles, uh, at the end of this month, actually. And, um, there'll actually be other students from all over the world there. Um, and I just, it was fantastic. So I remember I saw him. He told me about this. Uh, he was really excited. I didn't realize that he had already been winning for five years in a row. And I, so congratulations to Alan. We're very excited to, we're, we're proud of him in the first place. We're excited that he had this opportunity and we're really excited to hear how he does, um, later on. And then Junior Sarah Kirby says, I mean, the seniors have graduated, so we congratulate the seniors, right? I should have started with that, but I did say that in my update to all the families too. So, uh, Junior Sarah Kirby, she created a documentary that I'm going to send the link to you all such you can watch it. It's very powerful. It's 10 minutes. It's called The Battle With, The Battle Within. And it's about, um, it has a subtitle about teenage mental, mental health. Okay? And she submitted it to the Salem Film Festival and it won Best Picture in the documentary category. Out of 50, there were like 50, um, things in it. So I'm going to send the link to you. I watched it today. It's, it's really well done. It features, um, a number of our students and she interviews one of our, um, counselors at the academy as well. And it's just, it's a really, I think it's a really strong piece and I think it speaks to things that we've been talking about. So I will, uh, I'll make sure that we email all of you that link because when I, the link that was shared with me said that it's not searchable yet. So I don't think you'd be able to look it up yet.
Is that part of the filmmaking class at WA?
I, I believe so. Mr. Ang sent the information to us.
I know I saw one of her at the-
So I believe it was in the class.
At the art show, I saw one of her. She had a film in the PAC.
Right, 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 right.
So I assumed it might be, yeah. That's great.
I'd love to, if she would be interested in coming to speak to us at some point, maybe in, in the fall about just, you know, her experience in making it and her thoughts on, on the whole thing and the topic itself. It would be some, if she, if she's willing to, it would be amazing to hear from, from her perspective because I imagine for something like that, you have to research it.
Right. We can, we can definitely reach out to her and ask her if she, if she would want to do that. That's great. Um, then the last thing I was just going to share was that, um, if you're awake at 5:15 on Friday morning, the, uh, the Westford Academy composting team is going to be highlighted on Channel Five's 30-second wake-up call.
Oh, yeah.
Which I think is fun. It will be. Actually, you can look it up later, you know, but, uh, I know I, I won't be awake at 5:15 to see it.
That's cool.
Yeah.
And kind of building on something that the superintendent alluded to, I just want to congratulate Westford Academy. And I know how stressful that week is for everybody at Westford Academy looking at the forecast. And, I mean, they just pulled it off so well on Saturday. Fortunately, it was a clear as day, no pun intended, um, decision. Right? We're always hoping that it pours buckets when something's canceled in advance and, and sure enough, it did. But that ceremony is just beautiful every single year and the student speakers are so impressive. And Dr. Chu, you did a great job adapting to the circumstances. I think at that point, the rain had started and, um,
You'd forgotten to write a speech, didn't you?
Yeah.
I had it in my hand. I actually thought about even ripping it like as a prop and I was like, no, that would even still take too much time. Like, I'm like, no, we're just going to get, get on with it.
So I just want to acknowledge that in, uh, last week or the week before, I had, um, the privilege of going to see the senior capstones. And just watching or, or seeing the culminating, um, presentations over the past couple of months of what everybody has been working on, just always reminds me of how creative people can be in terms of how, how they're going to spend that time. And I think one of my favorites was one student had observed or participated in, interned in a classroom, actually not in Westford, and, um, I said, so you're going into education? And she said, I thought so, but I'm not. And that experience.
Yeah.
And, you know, to, for, for, for the individuals to have the time to do that type of exploration, even if it's learning that that's not what I want to do, is amazing. And, and students, especially at that age, don't need to know yet, um, what they want to do. And as the speaker had mentioned in graduation, it's more who they want to be versus what they want to be. But, you know, I just commend all of the students and Westford Academy for making that experience so special for the, um, seniors. I do also want to mention, I know we're talking about the job description in a bit, but I, I, um, I know that's specific to the description. So we actually have some volunteers that wanted to participate on the search for the new Director of Special Education and Social Emotional Learning. Uh, so that closes tomorrow. So if you're still interested in being considered, please do fill out the Google form. And from there, we'll reach out to everybody, whether they were selected or not selected, and move forward in that process. But I just wanted to put that deadline reminder out there.
Is that form also on the website?
It's, it was in my update and my update is on the website, but the form, I don't think we posted as standalone, but we-
But it's linked into-
It is linked in and we sent it out separately as well. So it actually was sent twice.
Great. Great. Thank you. I would say on the capstone too, I wanted to mention, I mean, I don't know if people know that it's open to the public. And so, you know, even if you don't have a student or you don't have, you know, per se a reason to go, it's really, really interesting. It's really fascinating. It's nice to see those three panel poster boards up, um, and see what people did. And I, I had the opposite experience. I had a young man who volunteered in a school, I think his, again, not in our district. I think his mom worked in that school. I said, well, is teaching something you thought you wanted to go in? He's like, not really, but now I'm thinking about it. So we, we net, we netted out there. Okay. Thank you. Uh, committee updates.
Um, so Finance Subcommittee met and reviewed fees. Like I said, we also had a presentation from Colleen Wallace, um, Department, uh, sorry, Director of Food Service. Did I get that title?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and that was really helpful because we talked to Jenny about including those accounts moving forward in what, um, is presented to the committee. Um, but it was nice to get, uh, some insight into those because it is sort of a self-containing, um, revolving fund, I guess, of sorts, is what was one way to think about it. And on, at first glance, the balances are very healthy, but there's actually a state mandate, I didn't learn, I learned this at the time, of what you're supposed to carry over. And we're at that, um, recommendation. So it's not like a pot of money. It's very, uh, regulated. So that was good learning for us. Um, and I think we'll continue that as a recommendation for the committee moving forward. Um, we also meet tomorrow, Finance Subcommittee members, hint, hint. And we have, um, we're going to review, um, DBUS ridership numbers as well as, um, the student activity account balances according to our policy 3401, says we should be reviewing not just the maximum balances, but, um, actually the balance amounts. So that is coming to us. To jump on to graduation, I would say that last night, the event, the lock-in event at WA was amazingly well done as always. And just, you know, you feel, you feel the overnight effects.
What shift were you on?
I did nine to 2:00 AM or 2:30 AM. Yeah. Um, but, and actually I was thinking about what it's like to be a graduate and do that all night and then wake up and graduate the next day with the rain delay. But it was really cool from my perspective because as I was handing out diplomas, I was like, oh, I recognize you. Oh, I saw you last night. Oh, I gave you a lay, like, because I was at a prize booth thing. So anyway, it was pretty cool. And my last up, two, sorry, two more quick updates. One is, um, Budget Task Force did start meeting last week. It was a, maybe a 12:30, 12 o'clock meeting last Wednesday. It has been recorded and it will be up on our new Budget Task Force pull-down website of the town website. Um, we also are scheduled to meet again this Wednesday. I think that one's at 12:30. Thank you. Um, and we just kind of, that first meeting was just to get going. We're talking about organization, who's going to be officers. We sort of wrote, um, inducted the, into context, the resident members to talk about the, you know, set the context for the problem. Um, and then I think this week, the goal is to sort of review FY24 and FY23 to kind of set that background as well as, oh, I just lost my train of thought. Oh, just, we're going to try, try to figure out who we're benchmarking to. Cause that's really a big, that's one of the first sort of gates, right? Is who are we doing all this research to compare to? Um, and the last thing is that I spent the day at Stony Brook. Those eighth grade civics action projects are in full swing there. Um, they are open to anyone. If reaching out to Mary Larkin, if you are interested in stopping by, um, basically they're using this as their final week of work to get going. They have to pick like sort of a passion project and make like a website, a PSA, an Instagram page, a fake one. And, um, it's just cool to walk around to the groups as they're working and be able to say, here's what I would do or, you know, here's some feedback or how did you get to that decision? It's kind of like a mini capstone exhibit, walk around. So, um, if you're interested, Mary Larkin was open to, um, anyone else. Thank you.
I'll be there tomorrow. What else from the committee? I think we have our, the Evaluation Subcommittee has, has an agenda item, so we'll save that. I wanted to highlight some things for our next meeting that are going to be coming. One that's not really a big deal, uh, I, I think is that we traditionally have somebody delegated to sign our warrants over the summer. We do need a signature. We can by law have a designee. In the past, we've had a designee and a backup. Under a strict reading of the law, it really says a designee, so we're going to try to go to that. Traditionally, that has meant somebody needs to be within, you know, a reachable distance of this building, you know, on those dates, you know, a couple, kind of a window of a day or two every other week, um, during the summer. We've talked, we think maybe we can do, you know, digital electronic signatures, so that might relax that. So, but if it's something you might be willing or interested in doing, think about that. We will, uh, we will vote at the next meeting to designate somebody to do that. Also, at the next meeting, we will be voting in new committee officers. So Chair, Vice Chair and Secretary. And I will not be Chair because I am term limited and I am at the end of two years. So this is it.
So what are, are our school committee meetings on Monday then?
It's on, it's on Tuesday.
On Tuesday, I'd be rather not on Juneteenth. Okay.
Yes, exactly. Tuesday, the 20th. Thank you.
I just wanted to double check because I know that that's Juneteenth.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah.
And I think, oh, the other thing is subcommittees. We want to try to figure out and, and put in the packet who's going to be on subcommittees. We've talked about this like multiple times this spring. And so I really am going to ask and I will send out a follow-up email that people submit. A lot of you already have submitted things you're interested in, which is great. A lot of you have been flexible and said, whatever you think works, but these are the times I can do. That's great too, because we recognize some committees meet during the day, some meet at night, different things. Different interests, different schedules, and that's all good. We will make it all work. And so we'll be looking to finalize that at the next meeting, among other things at the next meeting. But those are the things I want to plant in your heads. Yes.
I just realized there was one thing I wanted to say. Um, CPAC are holding their annual CPAC Social Night on Saturday night. The details are on the Facebook page and it is being hosted outdoors. It's a kind of a fire. And it's, it's been really nice that we've done it now two years in a row and it's just a lovely opportunity for parents, um, to come together and just kind of celebrate. We survived another year. And, you know, it's a nice way to, um, you know, engage and meet other parents who maybe, you know, um, share, have similar experiences for you and, um, or for new members, um, in the town to kind of meet and, and kind of, um, get to know, um, families who are in the special education community. So weather dependent, but hopefully so far it looks okay. I don't, I'm beginning to feel like Jim Antonelli. We're, we're go for Saturday evening, but you'll find that on the Westford CPAC page with all the details.
That's great. Thank you. Okay. I think that will do it for updates, which means we're on to business. Our 725 item, which is our LPAC update, which we've been looking forward to. I would like to welcome Amy Bailey forward. And I think there's something I can present. Isn't that correct? Let's pull that up. Please do. Anne McGally Ronan, thank you.
Thank you. It's nice to have a buddy.
Working on it. Getting there.
Technical difficulties.
Good. It took a couple of us to try to do that in your absence, so.
It's a few, it's a few clicks, right?
Yeah, we're going to write that down.
Yep, we're up.
We're here.
All right. Thank you.
I am Amy Bailey and I am one of our district ELL teachers with McGally, of course. Always nice to have a buddy. Um, I am here to report about the LPAC. I was here about a year ago to let you know how we were getting started. So this is my first year in review. And I'm also here to talk with you about ELL in Westford Public Schools. And the last time I was here to report about ELL was a decade ago. I was pregnant with my second child and it's been a long time. And I think that that communicates something as well. So I would like to address some of that as we move through. So I am one of our district ELL teachers. I work this year primarily at Stony Brook and Christopher Lee, but I have had the joy of working in every school in our district with the exception of Nav and Abbott, where my two children go to school or have gone to school. In addition to being one of the ELL teachers, this year I wear the hat of Title III Family Liaison in working with, communicating with our families about different events that are happening with our LPAC, working with our other teachers on professional development and things like that. So we'll start with our LPAC review and then we'll talk about what we've been doing in the last 10 years. So our LPAC requirement was established by the Look Act, which was passed in 2017. It was called the Language Opportunity for Our Kids. And that Look Act had some really major shifts in not just the language or the education of English language learners, but also all students in the Commonwealth. Because it got rid of our English-only law that we know was detrimental to our students. And it brought back the possibility of bilingual education. In addition, it established the seal of biliteracy. And for us in our department, we are in our first year of having had an LPAC, an English Learner Parent Advisory Council, much in the same way that there is the CPAC. The LPAC was modeled off of that. So we have three main requirements to report annually. Here I am. We meet regularly and I'll be sharing with you, um, how those meetings went. And then the last bullet point is the one that made me pause when I typed it. Participate in the review of school improvement plans. And that one we did not do, although I was fortunate enough to participate in the summer discussions and brainstorming about the school district improvement plan under my hat as the LPAC person. But I think we have work to do with our third bullet point moving forward. Our goals in Westford Public Schools are, or our hope for our LPAC is to create a space for connection and networking, to amplify the voices of our families and to enable a partnership with Westford Public Schools so that we can learn better from them. And I would say very honestly that all of this is still a giant work in progress. We've taken some steps, but there's much more work to be done. In school year 2022, a planning committee joined me to start thinking about how we get the word out, how we can structure the beginnings of what we're doing. As the law requires, the district is responsible for, um, getting the LPAC up and running and supporting it until such time that families are able to take it over. So I had a number of members on the committee with me, including administrators, other L teachers, a school counselor, a principal's assistant, a community member who is also a former English learner himself, and a student in the class of 2022 who made some amazing flyers for us with her graphic design skills. And our major task was to plan and facilitate a new family information night. And we did that at the end of August this year with a really amazing turnout. We had over a hundred caregivers show up to the Blanchard Library. We realized maybe that space wasn't quite as big as we thought. And it was a really great turnout and a great opportunity for families to ask those pressing questions that you just can't find trying to search through a website. So before you, you see the meetings that we have had. Um, our new family information, information night was of course, our strongest turnout. And that was open to all families, not just LPAC families. At that point in time, we hadn't identified who all our English learner students were. In October, we had our first LPAC meeting and we offered it in hybrid format. So we were here in central office and it was open to families to join us in person. And we also, um, joined them on Google Meet. And that is the first night that we learned that we are an online meeting group. We had one in-person person who was wonderful and we had 12 families join us online. In November, we partnered with the JV Fletcher Library with a K-2 focus and the children's librarians ran, um, similar to one of their Mother Goose Storytime events. And we had a, a small but energetic crowd join us at that one. In December, we switched gears to a more serious topic. We talked about access testing, grading and standards-based report cards. And we had another 12 families join us for that one. In March, we were very fortunate to be joined by Stephanie Grabowski Devlin, who is the supervisor, I don't know the terms. Curriculum Coordinator. I've been in too many districts with too many terms for the same position. She presented to us about the seal of biliteracy. And while we did not have a large turnout, I think some of our families still view this as a high school thing. I'm not there yet. It was great to start the conversation with keeping your home language going, even when your students are maybe not too excited about it because it will benefit their language skills overall. But you're also keeping the door open for when they realize how important it really is. So that was a wonderful conversation to be able to have. And I think as ELL teachers, we learned a lot from Stephanie as well. And then in May, we tried to meet and greet. Um, we attempted an online, we had a couple of people turn out. And then we attempted an in-person at Stony Brook and McGally and I got caught up on what we were working on. So we are not an in-person group, confirmed.
In the middle of the day.
In the middle of the day. Our attempt was to be at Stony Brook, knowing that that was a walkable distance from a lot of the neighborhoods that some of our families come from. And realizing that we had only been doing evening meetings until that point. So it was an attempt and we learned. We may try again. But that is what we have done so far. And then the next slide is my little plug. Our June LPAC meeting is on Tuesday from 6:30 to 7:30 on Google Meet. All families will have received this flyer through principal communication and you'll be getting it again in my LPAC newsletter tomorrow night. And we'll be talking about the access test score reports that you will be receiving shortly. So we'll be able to go through what those scores mean. And we'll have some time to talk about transitioning to the next grade level or the next school building for many students and have some time to ask questions regarding those topics. So as the Look Act requires, we will continue to support our families and to run the LPAC ourselves until such time as we can, um, create a system that caregivers can sustain on their own, again, with our partnership and our support. As I looked through our, the, the beauty of Google Meet is that I get the attendance report. And we have hit a wide variety of families, but not a consistent representation of people. So we will have to get creative with how we approach this and the kind of topics, um, that we cover. I think it was a good start. And when I compare it to the feedback that I received from other LPACs when we were in the planning stages, I think we are moderately successful. It doesn't feel satisfying to me, but in comparison, we are doing okay. Comparison to okay is maybe not that okay. So we'll have to keep plugging and keep working at it and think about what we can do to bring our families in, but more importantly, what we can do to elicit their voice. And if people have suggestions, I'm certainly open to them. I find that trying to elicit feedback over Google Meet is a challenge. So, um, we have offered QR codes and links where families could send their questions in ahead of time. And we did get a couple of questions. So we'll probably continue- And we did get a couple questions, so we'll probably continue to do that. But we'll need to do some more creative thinking in order to get this up and running in the way that we hope it would.
Amy, have you surveyed? Have you tried a survey?
I did.
Okay.
We did not get a response.
Okay. I'm just wondering, because most of the LPAC families, now like first-generation families, and then they're probably like culturally not used to how things have been done or like to actually get onto Meet or like it's not now in grade.
We do send out all of our information in all the languages that we translate for in our district. But we have not had any requests for translation or interpretation. And so I do think that there is a disconnect between what I'm sending out and what people are receiving. Next year, I would like to try using Talking Points for communication with our LPAC. Talking Points is a, it's a free program to teachers and I use it frequently. It's sort of like a WhatsApp kind of, you can send out information in a variety of languages and it shows up as a text message. You can also link to documents and other things like that. And my families that I work with as their teacher respond very quickly to those. I can see from the newsletters that I send out, every time I send it, I get in about the 60 to 70 opening. So.
That's good.
That's, we're getting out there. But there's definitely still some barriers that we need to cross.
I send emails that get 33%.
Typically, I think we've heard at the MASCE conference member that like the school industry standard is even below like other industries.
Yeah.
No, that's really good.
According to the schools' rates, you're probably even higher than you think.
Yeah, that's really good.
Were you open to a question on this or do you want to?
Yes.
Okay. You mentioned, I think you said you had like broad representation, but you were lacking consistency. Is that how you termed it? Just sort of you're not getting the same?
Well, I mean, I'm not sure that I can say 12 is broad, but it's not the same 12 every time. So it's this 12 and then it's that 12. So we're communicating with a number of families, but we're not bringing in that group that's here with us every time that then might become our people who take over the leadership of it. And I don't think that we have really yet communicated the purpose of the LPAC to our community in a way that they understand how I'm thinking of it in my brain. Right now, we're delivering information and I think they're happy to get the information. It's a lot of things that we haven't communicated in the past, but it's not two-way right now.
Have you, have you been able to record any of them to then share?
I haven't done that.
Because I would also agree and say that 12 is a lot. You know, I mean, I totally appreciate your feeling, but like the idea that you're having 12 people show up to a voluntary thing is also.
Oh, we were happy, we were, we were happy. We did celebrate it.
We were told to expect zero.
Yeah.
And see, when we were planning, from other districts and from.
Yeah.
CPAC doesn't always get that either.
We were pleasantly surprised.
I still have higher hopes.
That's good, that's good. So we're just encouraging you.
Thank you. Are there any other LPAC?
Yeah, I just have a couple, I just have a couple questions. So in terms of like, this is a very basic question, but when you send out like your newsletters, are they translated or are they?
I use Smore and so it has the translate button right on it. So it goes out to families that way. When I send my, so I've done it in a couple different ways. I'm going to hold my paper here for all the people at home who can't see me. I use Google Slides, so I do my English version and then I translate to all the languages on their own slide. So when I send it to Principal Communication, they put the link to the Google Slides. And I'm starting to do on my English version, a link to each language slide so that families.
And then in the bottom it said, if you need a translator, it said it's in English, so that's why I was like.
When they click on their slide, it's translated.
Okay, thank you. I was trying to figure out how that was going to work. Thank you.
Yes. My brain is kind of spinning all around with my little translation technique. So if anyone has feedback, I'm open to it. I have a lot of links and things that are happening all the time.
You've mentioned like two or three tools I've never heard of tonight that I'm like, oh, that sounds really interesting. I want to see more about that.
That's great, that's great.
Any other LPAC questions? Okay. So moving on, I arrived here in school year 2013, 2012, 2013. So this is my 11th year in Westford. And the job I am doing today is nothing like the job that I was hired to do in every sense of the word that I could possibly describe to you. So where we were as a state and as a district in 2013 is entirely different than where we are now. In Westford Public Schools, our purpose in the English Learner Department is to provide systematic, explicit, and sustained instruction in academic language across all content areas through the four domains of language use, listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And when teachers try to ask me, well, what does that mean? What do you do? I said, well, basically, if it involves language and a child, we're supposed to do that. So we have to look at every child that comes in front of us. We have to look at the content areas that they're seeing, the topics that they're seeing, the language demands of those content topics at that given grade level and prepare those students to be able to tackle it. In addition, we need to look at the social context that our students are working in. I just had a request from a mom last week to help her daughter learn some slang because she's struggling to keep up with that social conversation. We talk about cultural norms. We talk about cultural thought patterns and how that might affect a person's writing. So if it involves language and culture, it's our responsibility. And it's a big daunting job, but it is also incredibly rewarding and incredibly moving. I am a teacher who gets to see the progress almost daily. And not everyone gets that gift, but I get that gift. One thing that I think is important to remember, especially when we hear so much about achievement gaps and English learners struggling on MCAS assessments, when we take the long view and we look at the data for our former English learners, those students who have gone through the program and achieved the necessary levels of proficiency, they are performing at or above their English-only peers. I don't know if the data in Westford holds up to that. And that is an area that I think we should dig into and see if we are matching that state, that state representation. So from 2013 to 2023, when I first started here, I was a .6 teacher for about three months and I was the second teacher. We had one full-time and then I was the .6 and then I became full-time that February. And then the following year, I started at .8 and that lasted a whole two weeks. I hadn't even gotten through assessing all my new students yet. So we are now, what you're seeing here is total tested students, because I had trouble tracking down the data of what our actual roster number was in 2013. In 2023, we have tested 140 students on our state-required Access for ELLs assessment, but our current number is one, well, we'll get to that, you'll see a little bit more. We have six full-time teachers now and the laws that inform English language education have changed dramatically as well. When I started, it was in English-only and I had to remind teachers that you have to give it in English. You may only use very limited home language support. And now we are able to really instruct students in the way that matches what they need and matches the way that they'll learn. So before I go into what we've been up to for the last 10 years, I want to take an opportunity to introduce some of the people that you don't usually see, because I am often the one sitting up here talking. So this is the other person that you see sometimes. So when McGauley came on board, we became her responsibility.
We can keep moving that.
She's not just the Director of Curriculum and Instruction, she is also the ELL Director. Michelle Wagner is our Westford Academy ELL teacher and this year she also sweeps in to take a group at Blanchard. That's me, you've heard my story. Erin DeSilvanetto works at the Abbott School, the Day School, and she also sweeps into Blanchard to work with students. Michelle Santos is a very busy lady between Robinson and Nav Nasset and growing even more busy next week. Erin Connors-Pichel is one of our full-time ELL teachers at the Miller School. She is the Miller School only, as is our next slide, Colleen Tessier. The Miller School ELL population is definitely our largest in the district at 50 students. So we have two full-time teachers in that building. And sitting behind me, we have our ELL intern that we were so excited to take. Jen Scorano has been just fabulous for us. She is a math interventionist at the Abbott School and has been for quite some time. And in her hour beyond her math duties, she switches hats, as she likes to say, and she becomes our ELL intern. And she has been invaluable to us and really made it possible for us to see our students when some new arrivals came, which I'll discuss later. So here we are by the numbers. We have 164 students as of today. I am told that more are coming next week. We have 39 home languages in the Westford Public Schools ELL program alone. That does not account for other languages that are spoken by students not in the ELL program. There are 10 languages for which we translate in Westford Public Schools. And it's important to note that those families are not all ELL families. We frequently have fluent English-speaking reading, writing students whose families may need support with all of the communication that they're receiving. Here's just my little graphic. And as you can see, the ones that are a little bit bigger are the ones that we have more of. And my next graph should speak to that. Here are 39 languages. I listed them out as they are reported on our home language surveys. So there may be some overlap between Chinese and Mandarin, but these are the languages spoken by our families.
It's amazing.
So statewide, things, as I mentioned, have changed tremendously. We had the Retail Initiative and that is the last time that I was invited to speak here because I became the SEI lady for Westford for quite a while, teaching the SEI endorsement course here for a number of years. And in addition to that new licensure requirement that came out at that time, we received a new assessment for our students. So we've been doing the access assessment and then we did the access 2.0. And we had new regulations or recommendations for instruction and new criteria for exiting the program. And as you'll see in some of our data, you can probably point out the year that they made it harder for everyone to exit because all of our numbers around the state jumped that year. And then most recently, we got the Look Act and we got to welcome back our home language use in schools, which is very exciting. And we have some new reporting requirements. We now report about SLIF students, which are students with interrupted or limited or interrupted formal education. And we have seen an uptick in some of those students coming to Westford. And we have some new paperwork requirements for our department as well. And then of course, our LPAC. And most recently with WEDA, which is the organization that does our standards and our assessment, they put out new standards in 2020. So specific to Westford, our population increase has been significant. The increase in the home languages that our families speak has been significant. We have seen a rise in the number of families who require translation services. We've seen a rise in the number of students with proficiency levels of one and two. One would be at the beginning level of English proficiency, just starting to learn English. And when we have students at those levels, that requires additional blocks of instruction. So when we're looking at how our number of students has grown, it's important to note that it's not just a number. It's also looking at the other numbers that that student carries and whether those translate to more hours of instruction or more blocks, I should say. And then of course, our SEI endorsement teachers have been working through. So I'm going to highlight our numbers this year because this year we saw a significant jump even from last year. Our.
Or this one.
I snuck one in late and so you don't have the one that I snuck in late. But later you can look at the one that I snuck in. It's, I have a five-year graph that's wonderful and it shows the climb. Yeah, it's beautiful, but I was trying to dig through. I've been hoarding data a little bit for the last five years, but I don't, I couldn't go back that far. And some of my, my data hoarding got lost in my messy Google Drive and I just found it after school today. So I snuck one in, it's beautiful, you can look at it later. But our, our numbers show a pretty significant climb. That's okay. There we are. So now we are at 163 students, which is a far cry from the 43 that we had a decade ago. And you can see the breakdown, the Miller School, I broke out, I just split their 50 into 25 and 25 so that you could get an idea. They don't split the caseload in that way, but it is that way for me visually without going through their caseload. The Nav Nasset School has seen quite an increase this year, unlike it has in the past. The Robinson School and the Day School have always had large populations and those have only grown as well. The Abbott School, while still small, is a much bigger number than it is in the past, has been in the past. It's typically been just one or two students. Christopher Lee has gone up quite a bit. Stony Brook has had a great jump and they're keeping me very busy. Blanchard surprisingly has gone down. That is our one.
Why do you keep touching things?
My finger is tired and it rests.
Don't worry.
That's what I'm gonna do.
Just leave it.
Yes, thank you.
And so the numbers that you're seeing on the screen here, these are our students that are able to take the access test, not the ALT access test. So we have some students who might take the ALT and those would be our students who might also be doing the MCAS ALT. They are not included on this data because their, their score breakdown looks different and I don't have those numbers. But you can see the red line and the yellow line is important to look at. The red line and the yellow line, especially when you look at Miller, they are almost even. And that's a significant amount of instruction for those students at the one-to-two level. In Westford, at the elementary level, students who are at levels one to two for proficiency receive ELL instruction every day. Kindergartners receive a 30, 30-minute? I'm looking around, none of my kindergarten teachers are here. I believe it's a 30-minute block. And our other students receive a 45-minute block and that comes from the recommendations from the state in terms of how long your block is.
Amy, is that all pull-out? Do you do a combination of push-in?
It is mostly pull-out. And I will get to why that is eventually. And then for levels three to five, we see them three times a week for 45-minute blocks, with the exception of kindergarten, that would be a 30-minute block. So the way that those red lines have been growing in the recent years has not just added another student to a group. In some cases, it has added additional blocks of instruction to fit into a teacher's schedule and a student day. I see you sitting back here. So here's just another breakdown at what it looks like at the K-5 level. So you can see in kindergarten, we have some students who are assessed in January is when, when our assessment happens, to some degree of frustration for us because then we have a whole, another half of a year of instruction to give. But we have some Level Ones in our kindergarten and some Level Twos as well. You can see at fifth grade is where our students are really starting to achieve those higher levels of proficiency. And it is very common for fifth graders to hit exit criteria and not move up to the middle schools. The middle school population is most often students who have just moved to Westford more recently. And of course, nothing is an all when I make those comments.
So what's the average time a student would be in a ELL program?
So there's not an average because as the state likes to remind us, every student learns language in a different timeframe. What research shows us is that five to seven years is the average amount that it takes for a student to gain academic English. And what we notice is that it will also depend on the level that a student comes in and the grade level that a student comes in. If we get a student who is. If we get a student who is already at a Level Three in kindergarten, that student most typically will exit the program very quickly because they are all little language learners, they are all little sponges. And that student is already coming with some really strong skills, so they might just need a little boost. If we get a Level One student in tenth grade, that student is going to be with us through high school. And that student is going to require significant support and maybe some creative scheduling to make sure that they can rapidly gain the language skills that they need at the same time that they have to master that high school content. When we get students who are Level One in sixth grade, they might be with us through most of high school. We have some magical students who just come, and they are language learners. That is one of their skills. And they can turn it around in a few years. So it all depends on the child. A lot of it also depends on the language background that they're coming from. There are some languages that are much closer to English. They might have some of the same rules, some of the same structures, some of the same sounds. We might have some students whose languages are very far apart. We might have students who are coming with a different writing system, having to learn the alphabet and the sounds from the start. And that can happen at any grade level. For six through twelve, we have a smaller population. So I didn't break it down by grade level because I didn't want to identify any individual students at a specific grade level. So, we have seen an increase. Last year, I had the joy, and I do mean joy, I'm not being sarcastic when I say that. I had the joy of developing a newcomer program for the middle school level. And I had three students in it last year. It was one of the most, I guess, my emotions live right behind my eyes. It was one of the most meaningful experiences that I've had as a teacher. And this year, my newcomer program traveled with me to Stony Brook quite conveniently because I had two more students show up at that school. So, it's something that we have been experiencing more often. And it is an amazing thing for me as a teacher to, to benefit from the experiences that those students bring. But it is also a tremendous challenge, particularly for our core content teachers. If we were a Lowell, those students would be in a specific content class that is sheltered for their necessary levels. But in a Westford, we throw them in with everyone. And our teachers have been working day in and day out to provide appropriate materials and support for our students and to make sure that they feel like they have a new home. And they do an amazing job, but they need more support than I'm able to give. So I want to throw that one out there. So what does this mean for us? We have some amazing things to be proud of. We have been making some great gains. We have really been growing. But along with that, we've got some growing pains. We have some things that we need to address. This year alone, we did our creation of the LPAC. We started summer screening for kindergarten students. Michelle Santos, between the Robinson School and the NAB-Nassett School, has over a hundred kindergartners to screen every year in the month of September. And we're finding that the entire month of September is just taken up by language screening with new students. So we are not able to get to our caseload until October, which means we're not able to even create schedules until October when everybody else is already set and off and running. So that has been a great help. We're working on a translation responsibility flow chart. With the increased need of translation in our district, we're finding that it was sort of piecemeal. And we had our form, and we had our resources, but we didn't have that structure of who does this kind of form? When it comes from this place, whose responsibility is that? When it needs to be communicated to a family, who takes care of that? So we're working on that right now.
Do you all do your own translation? Or do you pay for outside translation?
A little bit of both. It depends on the language of the student, and it depends on the nature of the translation. Anything IEP-related is being sent out for professional translation. And anything that is of a sensitive nature gets sent out for professional translation. Newsletters, teacher communication, that's done in-house using our tools. The next one, I think actually might have been the year before, but everything is now post-COVID melting together in my brain. We have a pre-referral checklist that we've developed in our department to use prior to one of our students going through the initial evaluation process so that we can help members of the Student Support Services determine what language would be appropriate for assessing the student. And, da-da-da-da, the one that I am super excited about because I have been working for eleven years with no curriculum. We have started a curriculum writing project. And we're very excited and overwhelmed at the same time. But as a department, this year, we've been meeting once a month. And we are working on math units, the language of math, because we have found that that is the most lacking in the department. And it is the most lacking in any ELL resources that are out there for us to pull from. So we are writing units K through twelve that will probably span three to six weeks, depending on the grade level, that addresses the language of math and how we, we use math to communicate, to analyze things. So that's very exciting. And we're super excited to keep going and then do more. So this will be many years for us. So, my next plea is for everyone to consider a change in language. I have been using the term "ELL" for a long time. And it doesn't accurately reflect who we have coming to us. Most of my students speak English. They are English learners in the same way that all of our students are English learners, even if they're English-only. But my students come with more language knowledge than that. And "multilingual learners" refers to the students that we have. And it might be students who are multilingual, bilingual, biliterate, multiliterate. And it might inform us about students who've been exposed to multiple languages. We will sometimes have students who only communicate in English. Their families may speak in their home language to them, and they respond back in English. And that's not uncommon. And that are some of the, those are some of the students that we have too. Move to the next.
I heard that quite a lot at the MASC conference in November.
So our ELS are gonna go to MLs soon?
ML PAC?
Yeah, it depends on what the state says. Because the state is driving that language.
We can expect it might get there.
The State of Rhode Island has already adopted it. And the WEDA Consortium that we get our standards and our assessments from has adopted it. And the reasoning is that it is asset-based. Our students aren't coming just to learn English. Our students are multilingual people who are developing their academic language skills across all their languages. So to be able to show value for that really matters to our students and to our community. And MATSOL, which is the Professional Association for Teachers Like Me, has also adopted that language. The term "ELL" is still in federal law. And so the State of Massachusetts has not changed that from any of their regulations or recommendations because they are in keeping with the federal law. The federal law also uses terms such as limited English proficiency, which is not a place that we want to go back to either. So, while I know shifting language is a challenge, and the ELL department loves to shift language, I think this is an important one to consider because I think it shows value to the skills and the culture that our families are bringing. And I think I've already covered that one, so we'll keep going. So, here's the problem in my mind that, that I want to express while I, while I have the floor. And I want to say thank you to Magali when I said I, I want to just be honest. And she said, "You say what you need to say." And so I appreciate the encouragement to do so. And I think many of you are probably familiar with how I am careful with my words, but I am honest with my words. And I want to do that with you today. As a department of six with a hundred and sixty-three students whom we see between nine different buildings, we are at a problem of capacity. Our caseloads are full, our schedules are full, and we lack collaboration time with anyone. When you have to be everywhere, you are also nowhere. And that impedes our ability to advocate for our students and to support their other teachers when we need to. I found myself having to leave an IEP meeting in one building early so that I could drive across town to get to an IEP meeting in another building. And that doesn't feel good. We have a particular need to provide more coaching and more support to teachers who are getting our newcomers. It's not something that they've had a lot of experience with. And we need to be able to support them in that and also support our students in those classrooms. Additionally, we need to do a better job of outreach with our families. And I think sometimes when we feel stretched thin and we look at whose needs we're going to cover first, we, of course, go to our students, but we're missing some other supports that we need to have in place. This year, as one of our PD offerings in the district, I participated in training with the Department of Ed to facilitate a course that they designed because they recognized that all teachers across the district needed access to professional development around English language education. And so, this PD course was really interesting. It was unlike one that I had taught before. It is a self-assessment. They have outlined their blueprint for what English language learner education should look like in the State of Massachusetts. And it guides us through assessing our role and looking at the other roles throughout and across the district. One interesting note, I had nineteen participants and representation from every school in the district, with the exception of the Miller School. And I haven't been able to interview anyone at the Miller School to see if it is because they feel like they have the knowledge and support that they need with two full-time teachers in their building. So the information that you'll see on the following slides that come from the feedback and the discussions that we had in this class are not true of the Miller School, or at least not confirmed true of the Miller School. And I imagine that their experience must look differently.
When you say participants, are you talking about?
Teachers. So just to give a little overview, this is the DESI blueprint. And they have outlined four pillars for English learner success. There's school culture, access to educators, opportunity and support, and a plan for future success. And they look at that at the classroom level, the school level, the district level, and the state level. Because they're emphasizing the point that all of those levels are responsible for this education. They are emphasizing that shared responsibility, and they're emphasizing equity. Look at the next one. I know they're small. I hope you have your reading glasses today. I can't read that well. As we looked through the blueprint, everyone was asked what, what resonated with them, what stuck out to them as they were looking at the blueprint. And over and over through the blueprint, "collaboration" is a term that comes up. "Appropriate resources" is a term that comes up. And so, these are some of their "I notice" and "I wonders" from looking at that blueprint. And then, the second one that we're looking at right now, they had to identify an area of need. So in their self-assessment, they identified areas that were strong, and they identified areas of need. And then I sent them into breakout rooms to have discussions across... These were more grade-level-specific and job-alike discussions. And I sat out of the breakout room for about five minutes just watching this board fill up with the word "collaboration." And it was, it was a quick consensus that that is an area of need. The other two major areas of need that, that people identified were resources. And one made a really interesting point that they may not even know what resources are available for them. There might be things that are already great and at their fingertips, and they don't know it. And related to that was the need for more professional development. We did the Retail Initiative, and then we sort of walked away. And that was one major drop in a really large bucket. So this is an area where people are saying, "We need to revisit." So as we're talking about our multilingual learners, I think it's also important to keep in mind that when we learn language, we're not just learning language and communication. We're learning other ways to think, and we're learning the way that thought is influenced by language. We don't need to watch that TED Ed video there, but I just clicked it. For anybody who's interested, it's a pretty quick one, but it's, it goes through how the brain changes in multilingual people. And so, across the top and bottom of this map of Westford, you see what the word "home" looks like in the languages that we have. And what I want is for all members of our community to feel like they are home, to feel like they are valued, to feel like they are welcome. And so, we have done, I think, an amazing amount of work. Magali calls us "small but mighty." But when you have a mountain to climb and you're only halfway up, and the amount of people that you need to bring up that mountain with you just keeps getting bigger and bigger, it doesn't mean it's getting easier just because you're halfway up. So, we still have half a mountain to go. And I think the state has a way of magically making that mountain bigger. So, we have a lot of work still left to do. We've done some amazing things, and we have made some really giant gains in the last few years. But our job is getting bigger. And that problem of capacity isn't going away. And though we are small but mighty, when a Level One student who has come to us, not because they want to, but because their family had to, there's a lot that goes into making that child feel safe, feel welcome, feel at home, and feel like they can be a student like every other student and learning like every other student. And right now, we're not always able to give them that in the way that we know that they need. So, I'm being very honest tonight, more than I typically do in a public presentation. But I think it's important. Our families and our students deserve it. So we have a lot of work to do in our department. And that problem of capacity makes it a challenge to have those conversations, to make those plans, to get those resources, and to be in all the places that we need to be. So I'm leaving that one. And I'm ready for questions.
So, I mean, I'll just start, I don't have a question right now, but I'll just start and say thank you for, I think it was pretty eye-opening because, like you said, we haven't had this for a while, and so it was really important. And I'm sure I speak for the committee, but they're gonna speak for themselves in a second. That, you know, we're certainly impressed, and if not a little overwhelmed at what all you're doing. And so, thank you.
Thank you.
Catherine?
Amy, again, to reiterate, thank you. That was so detailed and informative. One thing I'm just curious, as you were speaking about, you know, students, particularly, I'm thinking of that Level One, Level Two learners coming into our district, and even some then of the older students who, who appear in. How do we manage, with the counselors? Because I'm also very aware, it's not just a language issue that we have to tackle. It's to make sure that kind of social, emotional well-being. And so, do you also work with the counselors? Because I imagine it's very hard for them or to navigate. Because I imagine it's very hard for them or to navigate through what are big topics when you have that language barrier in those beginning stages.
Yes, I was just telling McGauley the other day, one of the Stony Brook counselors just had the way that he expressed it was just, the word caught on to me, and I loved it. We had a family that needed some support, and so he let me know that they had reached out to him, and then communicated with them to see if they wanted me in there as well. So we work in partnership quite a lot. But I just thought it was so nice that in his email to them, he said, Amy is, you know, their language teacher and their advocate. Put that on there. And I think that's a big hat that I wear. So I partner with this school counselors quite a lot, as do the rest of my colleagues. I've communicated with our new community health person. We have a significant need for mental health resources that are multilingual. So that's something that we've been trying to navigate and support our families with this year as well. So it's an all-hands-on-deck. I've had administrators stay with me for a day just to make a student feel welcome and feel comfortable, and to have another face in the building that's not mine because I can't be there all the time. So everyone steps up. I've had cafeteria workers who have either a language that's adjacent to the one that I'm bringing to them, or even just a friendly smile. They'll communicate with me if my students seem a little overwhelmed or a little unsure going through the cafeteria line. I have Jen Piper, who helps set me up with bus passes sometimes when I have families who are just struggling to navigate that signup process.
It's a big undertaking, but thank you.
So it's interesting. So my sister is actually the Director of World Languages for the school district where we grew up. And so I understand a little bit more about this. When you're talking about resources, like what's your ask? Because what you're saying is, we have a bunch of kids, and we don't, we have, all our slots are filled, and so we need time for collaboration, and you're talking about travel time. So like, what is the need? Not that I'm saying that I can fill it in for you, but I like, I like an ask.
My ask is the one that's probably the hardest to fill. I need bodies. I need...
But how many is what I'm asking you?
At least one. Minimum.
That would stop the bleeding.
One FTE.
And to put it in perspective, our wonderful ELL intern right now has taken on a group at the Abbott School by herself without her cooperating teacher partner because we had a student move into the Blanchard District without anyone who could cover. So we are using unpaid help to cover our current caseload. And looking at the students that I know I have next year, since I've gotten their scores, and the students that I know are moving up from the next building down, I will take on, I am supposed to take on another group. So when I look at my student numbers who exit, I lost a student from this group, and a student from this group, and a student from that group over there, but I didn't lose a group. So I have, I'm adding a grade level that I don't currently have this year, and I don't have the time in my schedule to actually do that next year.
Ideally, there would be one ELL full-time teacher.
In each building.
In each building, especially with the numbers getting so big.
Clearly, with a school like the Abbott, they only have five. So that's probably not a reasonable request for the Abbott, but...
But even a one-time full-time between even NAB and Abbott or something like that?
Michelle Santos right now is between Robinson and NAB, and she has thirty-two students with two more coming next week. That is an overwhelming caseload to be split between two buildings. Because the split between two is also what makes it more challenging. I can have a bigger caseload if I am never leaving that building. I can manage that better, and it makes the scheduling easier. But having to split, last year I drove from school to school to school after every single class. This year, I had five teachers change their schedules for me so that I could just drive once.
And the state doesn't dictate ratios, caseloads, things like that. There's no, it's really up for us to make it work.
And it looks very different in different areas, too. If I were only, you know, in one school, I can have more groups because I don't have travel time. You know, my numbers can go up, and it won't feel as stretched.
The other thing we want to consider, too, is if the kids are at a level three, high three or fours, and they require less time for ELD, we need to make sure that they're going into classrooms that teachers at SEI endorse. And so at the younger grades, we're good with that. As they get up to the middle school and high school, we're finding that if those Level 3 or 4s don't have that support, then they're going to actually regress, and we have to be careful with that because we don't want to exit them too soon and then have them lose their momentum and their English proficiency.
What's involved, McGauley, in getting those kind of middle and high school teachers kind of trained in this, is it ESD?
The ELL, the English Language Development is, that's a class. But the SEI is the Sheltered Education, Sheltered Instruction. But that's the content teachers having that endorsement so that the kids can have access. What is interesting, though, is in Massachusetts, they require the SEI endorsement for content teachers, but not for wraparound teachers. So like Integrated Arts, they have all of their MLAs, but they're not required to have SEI endorsement. So that, we were just at MatSOL, and that was a big concern, is that when we integrate or have the kids be included in other content areas, be it academic or non-academic, art and music are the first places we put them in, or PE. And those teachers don't have the SEI endorsement. So the state and MatSOL are, well, I should say, the researchers at the universities are pushing for some sort of change for that.
And what is the SEI endorsement, then? Is that a training?
It is a training. It's a full course.
When it first started, the way that the state also set this up was that a teacher could only take the SEI course if they had a student who required that. So it gravely limited the number of people who could actually participate. Now it's been, it's been attached to the requirement for recertification for some teachers. But again, the state isn't providing the resource for the other teachers. So Integrated Arts teachers couldn't take the courses. They wouldn't have been allowed in.
Oh, they wouldn't even be allowed in?
No, and you could only take the course if you had a student that you were supporting at that time. So that in itself created a really strange way for, so you have some teachers, we have teachers in every grade level who have the Sheltered English Immersion Certification, but we have teachers who never needed to get it, and then now would be told that they would have to pay for it in order to do it on their own because now that the state has changed all that, so it's become quite complicated.
They haven't made it easy for us.
But to that, like, I just know that that's kind of the challenge when we look through 6 through 12, is that like both middle schools had, like, maybe one team had the endorsement and the other team didn't. And then you move the teams around, and all of a sudden, you might have this person had it. And then like at the high school, you might have some teachers, they were teaching 10th grade, and now they're teaching 9th grade, and they have the endorsement, but now you might have, you know, it's possible that maybe none of the 11th grade, I'm just making this up, but maybe none of the 11th grade math teachers have the endorsement, which is then, and you might not have a student that year, but then all of a sudden, to Amy's point, in January, you could. Right? And that's another piece that has become, with this massive growth. I mean, I watched it firsthand, Amy honestly just going to get kind of pulled as your numbers really started growing. And all of a sudden, we would have that where you would be supporting students at Stony Brook, and someone would move to Blanchard. And immediately mid-year, you would be like, ah, okay, we have to figure this out because the law says you have to do certain things. You always want to do what's right for the students in the first place. But then it could be, you have a 7th grader and an 8th grader, and their schedules aren't the same anyway. And so how do you make that work?
The logistics are very, very hard.
We've been creative. We have bused a student to the school that is not their home school, which I think works for newcomers. But when you got a student who's a Level 3 student, and they might only be in your program for another year, maybe two at the most, it's hard to tell a 6th grader, come to the school that's not your home school. But don't do too well, because in three, in two years, we'll have to switch you as an 8th grader to go back to your regular school. That's a hard pill to swallow. It doesn't feel right for kids. The other piece of the law that really made this all interesting is that we can only assign an unendorsed teacher to a multilingual learner once in their school career. So to some extent, we have made these pathways. But when we mix up teams, or when you look at the way that the high school schedule works, you can't always stick to the path. So we need to address that.
And the date for the expectation for the teacher to get the SEI endorsement starts the day that that student walks into their classroom. So if a kid walks in in January, that's the date that it starts, that they have a year to get that endorsement.
How long does it take to actually do that?
It's like a semester course.
Forty-five hour course.
It's a beast of a course.
And that also, well, that also didn't help when it first came out, the teachers who then took it, it was a lot of work. And so then, they're not, you know, yelling to their colleagues, hey, this is one you want to sign up for. Because they made it, it was, it was...
It was rigorous, yeah.
The administrators all had to do an administrator version of the course as well, too.
Oh, I'm up. Sitting that hole in. Thanks, Amy, for being here and the great presentation. Actually, the whole time I was thinking to myself, like, how lucky we are to have someone who's so passionate about this, and I really appreciated that. My question has more to do with, it seems like the requirements in your job has changed so much in the past ten years, and it's like, it seems like it's almost followed inverted trajectory of the school's population, right? Like, our school's populations have actually gone down in ten years. But your, the multilingual learner population has gone up, right? Do you, and I know you can't forecast with certainty, right? But do you foresee that following the same trajectory?
The line graph that you all did not get to see, there is one year that we dipped.
This one? That one?
Yes. There's one year that we dipped, and that was when the state changed criteria. So when we switched to Access 2.0, they said everyone must get a 5 across the board, and then they realized that that made our population huge in the state of Massachusetts, all across the state. So we jumped from eighty-eight to one hundred and two one year because of some of those procedural changes, if you will. And then the year that they said, oh, whoa, 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 you know what? Let's rethink that. Five was a little bit much. Four point two sounds better. And when we had that change, we went from one oh two down to eighty-eight in the fall. What we most typically do is start at one number, and then throughout the year, we have a more transient population. So students come and go, but we always end a little bit higher, usually five to 10 students higher. But in the last couple of years, we have been gaining twenty students. And so it's really grown, and that trajectory, I think, is being seen across the state. But maybe a little bit more so in Westford. I just talked to a teacher in Grattan Dunstable last week, and they're still in the forties. And I said, we're at a hundred and sixty-four. But we were at a hundred and forty in January when we tested our students with a handful of students that aren't included in that number because they would have taken the Access Alt. But since January, we've gained almost twenty students. So I don't see it stopping yet.
When we started the LPAC, we had just tripped the hundred.
That was the first year, because for a number of years, we'd get like just to about a hundred at the end, but I think they always went by the October data, and we were never at a hundred in October. We were in June, but we never were in October. And then last year was the like, okay, here they are. We have crossed that threshold, and we are not going back. And so we have grown quite a bit. You'll also notice that the COVID year, we stayed pretty consistent when no one was moving, and so that helped.
Yeah, it was in the nineties range.
I was just going to echo, thank you for such a thoughtful presentation covering all the whys, the asks, the, you know, just everything. A lot to think about, and I think one thing I'm reflecting on is how much I've learned in three years about how we project our special education population and staffing and budget. And I'm trying to think about how that sounds even more complex or just as complex, right, in this population.
It becomes more complex when they're duly identified.
You've just already lost me. Right, like, I mean, it's just so... Sorry, I was being flippant, but yes, I knew what you meant. I just meant the complexity is now exponential. And so I think it's helpful, obviously, to get that in front of us and think about what that means for staffing needs and budget and all those discussions, and so helpful to have that in the spring, right, and be thinking about that. And I'm also thinking about how in the fall, sometimes we do curriculum walkthroughs, and how can we loop this in and have some more visibility, really, into what your team is working on.
I'm open to a ride-along anytime. Come spend a day. I would love to take you through and just do my think aloud of all the things that we cover.
I think that would be really powerful.
The other thing that we've been talking about, too, is how do we cross-pollinate the department? So science of reading is a huge lift. How do we get our ESL teachers onboarding with that PD, too, just to build that awareness for them? And the same for, you know, 6 to 12, how do we get Janet involved in some of that science, just so that they have that scope?
So that's... That they understand what's going on in the classroom.
Yeah, and know what they're going to get when the kids go up there. So that's also on our agenda for next year.
Can I ask, I mean... Yeah, you may not like this one. Valerie really may not like this one. I mean, it sounds like you're talking about at least one teacher, and it sounds like you could potentially have that, you could take that teacher tomorrow. We clearly have the budget done for next year, but do we ever have an option to kind of go back and review or see how we have the potential to get that one more teacher for the fall? Because I would hate to think that we have this huge capacity and burden on our staff for a whole other year before we can do anything within the budget. So I would just be curious, is there ways that we can do that, or how?
We've certainly had situations where...
Where we've had enrollment change, where we've had to hire an additional teacher. I think if the data, if the data shows that an additional person would be helpful in this capacity, at this space, then we could certainly look at that. But it wouldn't be any different than all of a sudden if we needed an additional section for something that happened over the summer.
So that's our homework.
Thank you.
Just to be aware of that and to be looking at that, and also to get some LPAC to keep generating that buzz around LPAC, and I've already had, I already have some ideas, so. And to make sure that you come back sooner than, when was the last time, did you say, six years ago?
Ten years ago.
Ten years ago, oh, yeah.
This year, last year.
Yeah, well, for LPAC.
LPAC, but not for ELL.
This is kind of like the State of the Union for ELL.
I mean, you may not want to come back.
I do have one question I wanted to ask, and it was, when you were, again, that survey with the nineteen, the nineteen people who participated, those were just additional teachers. They were not clearly, because there's only six of our members on the ELL team. Because I was curious, as you had talked about the fact that we, and it is kind of important for everybody to know that you have been meeting once a month as a team, working on this curriculum. So there has been, you've had an opportunity to collaborate that we've looked at to see if we can continue to find momentum, that ability as well, right? That was the teachers, classroom teachers collaborating with their ELL.
Yes, yes. For example, I'm in Chrisaffoli from seven thirty in the morning until ten thirty, well, ten o'clock, and then I have to hightail it out of there to get to Stony Brook. But, well, there doesn't start till eight thirty. I do my prep there because I can't go do my prep in a building that has people in it and then make my way across town. I won't fit at all in a day. I, I won't fit it all in a day. So, teachers come at eight thirty, and so do kids. And they start their morning stuff, and I pull my classes, and then I'm gone. And I don't have another break in my day until the afternoon, and I'm not in that building to be able to check in with them. I can't check in with them after school, so I.
It's that ability to be collaborating with the teachers in the building.
Yes. And we do email. We do communicate, but the amount of time it takes me to send an email to the six third grade teachers who have my, or five third grade teachers who have my group, takes more time than me running upstairs. You know, sometimes we'll be leisurely about me collecting my group. I, I purposefully don't have my kids come to me. I go get them because I can walk in a building, in a room, and have that two, you know, twenty-second, he okay? Let me tell you about this. It cuts down on my instructional time to be able to do that. So, somewhere along the way, someone's missing out. But right now, I feel like missing out on that instructional time is still better because I'm having a little bit of communication with teachers.
And at MatSal, they were, they were also saying that we do want to give kids the time that's recommended for their level of proficiency, but we also need to think about quality over quantity.
Yeah.
And so, for our ELL teachers and our staff that work with the same groups, the quality would be enhanced by the collaboration.
Amy, thank you so much.
Thank you. I know I went a little over my twenty minutes.
I'll, I'll be fast.
It's been ten years, I think you're, I think you, you clocked up a bit of time.
She earned it.
Exactly.
Been holding it all in this time.
It was a really, it was a really good presentation.
Thank you.
I just appreciate.
Excellent.
How you presented the data, and, yeah, it gives us a lot to think about, so.
Thank you.
See you, we'll see you soon.
I appreciate the time.
Thanks.
Does, does anyone need a bathroom break?
I took mine, but.
No offense. No, I love you.
Free to go. No, you can slide over, you can slide over, and.
So, I will try to be brief.
So, just so people know, this is our Equity Curriculum and Instruction Department update with McGauley Ronan. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me here. First of all, thank you to the committee. I feel like this is a privilege for me to give you like the State of the Union of this new department. But I also want to start by thanking Dr. Chu and Dr. Clary for giving me the autonomy to figure it out and to kind of let me go and explore. And I, I, I've, you know, I've learned a lot along the way, I've made a few mistakes, but it's part of the growing pains, so I really, really am so privileged to be here. When I, when I interviewed and I started sharing my story, and you'll understand this when I get to the context. I, I started to share my story about me, who I am, and what brings me to this work. And the reason why I raise it is because I recently read my feedback from the teachers, and there was some cold feedback and some warm feedback. And I just want to address because, address what is the role of this office and what is my role? And to be honest, I've been figuring it out because it's such a new role. So, there are, you know, I've got, I've gotten to, every school by October, I was able to visit every school. That was a goal I set for myself. And then, throughout just making visits here and there, depending on the needs and things that come up. So, today, I read this, I was invited to the, a classroom, and I read this book. And Looking Like Me, and the theme of the book is a narrator looks in a mirror and asks, what do I see? As the story flows, the boy interacts with the family members, friends and community members who remind him of what they see when they look at him. And I know that when I came here, I felt like you saw something in me that I didn't see. So, I appreciate, that's what I appreciate about working with you. So, um. So, the community members remind him of what they see when they look at him, which in turn becomes something that he sees in himself, as I am. The book was just the book I needed to remember who I am, especially after reading the staff feedback. So, I just want to remind you who I am and why I'm in this role. So, I'm American Puerto Rican. My primary language was Spanish, and I'm still fluent. I'm the product of teen parents who both lacked a high school diploma. I'm a minority. People ask, who are you? So, I, I just want to share my story. I'm a minority. I'm a woman. I'm a mother. I'm a daughter, and he's all of those things, just the opposite. I'm a lifelong learner. I'm resilient, tenacious, and I heard that I'm resourceful, so I'll take that. I'm an advocate, and I'm a si, I'm a survivor of childhood trauma, and recently, a survivor of domestic violence. So, coming here has been a breath of fresh air, just professionally and personally. I have been challenged with anxiety and depression my whole life, and was finally diagnosed at thirty-four. So, you know, we talk about mental health, and nobody wants to talk about it. Yeah. So, here I am. I'm the first in my family to graduate from college and earn a postgraduate degree. I'm an educator with twenty-four years of experience in various roles, from classroom teacher, eight years, math coach, district math specialist, pre-K to four math curriculum coordinator, and a principal and assistant principal for five years. So, I, I have some experience to draw from. I have noticed in Westford that there are a ton of strengths here. And so, if teachers are watching, or people out in the community are watching, I have seen the wealth of strength in this district. I've worked with coordinators, with the principals, and the teachers, and they are devoted. I also want to, want to remind people that I'm a city girl with grit. And at times, that may come off as too direct. Knowing that about myself, I've worked hard in trying to master the four agreements. Be impeccable with your word. Say what you mean and mean what you say. And sometimes, I have not chosen the right words, but it's something that I'm self-reflexive and aware of. So, I, I, I like when people call me out because it helps me reflect. I try not to say things personally. I don't make assumptions, or I presume positive intentions, and I always try to do my best for whoever I'm serving, especially the students. I believe we can't choose our circumstances, but you can always choose to overcome them. Education is a great equalizer, as in equity, curriculum, and instruction. In one generation, you can change your socioeconomic status. I'm proof of that. And I'm all of those things and so much more. The charge that I was given by Dr. Chu and Dr. Clary was to use, the, the primary push was to launch a district-wide initiative on UDL, Universal Design for Learning. UDL in its own nature is equity. It is designed to provide greater equity. And so, out there, that's probably why people feel that my approach has been more top-down because that was the direction I was given. In trying to remediate and get through all of that work, I've tried to differentiate for different departments. I feel like we've gained, there, we've, I feel like we've done a lot this year, and I've moved at a fast pace, which sometimes I need to remember that I can't leave people behind. Some of the feedback I got back is chain of command. People are not sure who to go to, and we, I, that's true. I've been figuring that out, too, like, what am I in charge of? What is someone else in charge of? But I want to let people know, for those who have not met me, I have been in every building. I have read in several classrooms. I've attended many events to try to build those relationships and get to know the town. And, and my door is always open, so please email or just walk in. Part of the focus that I, I've observed this year is I've worked on analyzing systems and structures and the data trends, and, and then rolling out the professional development in a way that's differentiated, timely, and relevant within the framework of UDL. So, when I lay the foundation for the curriculum coordinators, they in turn adapt it for their content areas, but the main theory is there. I've attended several curriculum meetings, department meetings at the high school, after-school meetings, events, academic, integrated arts, and family information aids. And I can tell you, the system is in a good place. And we still have work to do, as you heard from my colleague. This year, we've worked on LPAC, worked on ELO policies and regulations, making sure we get the ten-day letter out. I worked on tons of translations, which goes back to what, what Amy was saying is, who translates what? And so, my approach was, if it's coming from the district, then we should translate it. And so, we started to figure out the responsibilities of the translation per district. What should we be responsible? What the school building should be responsible, and then the teachers? So, that, that will be, that flow chart will be coming out. And of course, it's always a living document, and there's always room for improvement. I've also devoted time to working with DESI, the Department of Edu- Education, and in their Equity Action Group, in other networks, the EL Curriculum Group, I've worked with them, and we've, we've gotten some great ideas to pull into our own module writing. So, there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work that I think people think, you know, sometimes there's like, who's the wizard behind the curtain? And, and there's no curtain. I'm here to serve the students of Westford and to support our teachers. So, I shared with you, I don't know if you have this PDF, Chris?
Yep, yep, I can bring it up.
And so, I just wanted to go over this infographic with you because part of the work is building inclusion and equity in the classroom, and Dr. Chu, his charge to me was, UDL. That's how we're going to provide support for art teachers, to provide support. They, they don't have the SEI endorsement, so we've got to support them in some way. Within the MTSS model, which is the multi-tiered system of support, universal design is a piece of that. It is an overarching piece. But as teachers and practitioners, we are also attending to all those other parts of the wheel. So, we're not saying throw out the baby with the bathwater with all of the creative and awesome lessons that the teachers create and do with our kids. What we want to do is be more systematic about our approach. So, high-quality instructional materials. That's why we did the pilots for the Science of Reading, is to have those high-quality materials. Deeper learning, how do we get to that? UDL is supporting us in getting to that for all learners. Differentiated instruction is not going away. It is part of the recipe of what is promising practices in our classrooms. So, we're not throwing that out. Culturally and linguistically responsive practices is also part of our work that is within the UDL framework. If I'm picking text, like this book is the nar, the narrator, the kids, there's not even a picture, but the kids could tell that the, the child was of darker skin because of the way that he was describing himself, and he's saying, this is me. I belong. So, being aware about what text we put in front of our kids is important. I did have the privilege of using some of the funds that we, we had to support buying curriculum resources for our ELL teachers, and they're so happy. But we made sure that we purchased books where the, the books were more representative of different cultures and different minority protagonists. So, we're looking forward to that. We also have to look at our curriculum and see, you know, our, what are, what are the biases within our curriculum? There are seven forms of biases. We did a nice seminar at MatSal, reminding me of, this is so important, we need to do this. But in general, the, the, my work this year has been to look at the structures and the systems, what can be tightened? Again, what can be, what can the teachers get rid of? So, in trying to streamline all that, even the behavioral support panorama has been fantastic. And so, it, it's a gift to have had a, a, a strategic district plan that's been approved and built in this year, and learning about that process and being part of it has really helped to define the work of, of this office. So, can you go to the next? Do you have any questions about this infographic I didn't ask?
I like it.
Yeah, it's really, this, it was, I just saw this recently from our PD training, and I hadn't seen it, and I scooped it up because it's the one that made the most sense to me. I just thought it was very clear. So, let me go back. The other thing that I have played with this year is, can you put the smores letter up, please? I haven't communicated on a regular basis with all the stakeholders. And again, it was because I was learning the systems and structures within this district. So, I know that, I learned that the curriculum coordinators, especially the K to fives, they put out a monthly updates for the curriculum, which is really strong and always well-done. I read them all. And, and then I was wondering, how do I piggyback off of that without inundating people with more emails or more things to read? So, this was just a mock-up that I did for my project for UDL, when I finished it a couple of years ago, or a couple of summers ago, I should say. And so, it's just an example of how can I push more information out there to all stakeholders? The coordinators gave me some good feedback, and they thought that maybe this would be better served on a trimester or a quarter because they're putting out their newsletters on the first day of the month. And so, they said maybe the middle of the month or within trimesters because it is a, it's a commitment.
McGauley, do you mind, just on that point? I have seen some districts also just have a website, like an equity website.
Yes.
And I'm just wondering, is that also an option to consider? You know, because we've got the superintendent's newsletter going, and the principals, you know, maybe there's, I don't know if you considered kind of using something like that where people can access it in their own time?
That is, that's an awful picture, can you clarify that? I don't know what I was thinking that day. So, yes, I've been trying to build up portions of our district website and try to get them more up to speed, but you're absolutely right. I, I, when I look at what are, what we're putting out there versus other districts, yes.
Or it could be, it could be that idea of adding something to either what I send out on, on, at the beginning of the month, or adding something to what the curriculum coordinators are sending out, whatever the, depending on the audience.
Yes, and, and, and that, that is true. The curriculum coordinators, I said, should I tag on with your letters, or I repeat yours on mine so people see that redundancy, and we get into the habit? So, those are all things I will consider and, and certainly need to beef up. But with the more clarity with the role and the district strategic plan, it helps to clarify where that, those four, like, those platforms would go. So, that, that's just one example of how I intend to improve communication next year. That's definitely one of the feedbacks. So, I'm gonna go back to. And then, this is, this is the living document for the Office of Equity Curriculum, Chris. And for me, this is a living document because some of the stuff, we don't have the answers to yet. But in looking at the district strategic plan, what I did is I went through each of the priorities and thought about what are the actions and measurable outcomes, the timeline, who's involved, and what resources are required. Resources required is not saying that those are going to be used, they're just suggestions and ideas of where we could pull from. This is where that resourcefulness part of me comes out, is I have tons of resources, I just need to like. I just need to like, narrow them down. So, for the first priority, we have the actions of develop a plan, we're still waiting on some of the, what are we going to do with the audit, who's going to do that for us? I'm not sure if you had time to look at this in detail, so if you have any questions, please just jump in. But having had the experience of this year, and knowing where you were with Dr. Warham and the ADL staff, the sense of belonging, is how do I honor that and build upon that, and get that message out to our teachers? Do you have any questions about?
I actually just wanted to say, I loved the layout of this document, and again, how it totally tied in with our ESTIP and our school improvement plans, it was very clear and so easy to read.
Thank you.
So I really appreciate how you tied that all in beautifully.
Thank you. So one of the examples of conducting equity audit, part of the work that I did this year was work with the Department Equity in Action, because they're putting out all these equity policies out there, but they don't know how it's going out in the field. And so, we've been part of that group, and we're working with Harvard in using the Rides, which is the reimagining integration. It says drivers or drivers, sorry, that's a typo. It should say drivers and equitable schools? Yeah, I think that's a typo. So, we were taught, it's a small group of us, it's Janet Kerstedt, it's Carolyn McHugh, it is myself, and Chris Sardella. And so, we've attended the meetings throughout the year, and then we have consultants, and actually, it's Mirko Chardin who's doing the UDL PD as part of this group. And so, we've been learning the rides, we've kind of done a small self-assessment of where we are with equity in our work, and we're working with one of the consultants to drive a kind of an engagement rubric, or diversity-inclusion rubric. We tested it out last week, and we were able to visit 24 classrooms in one day, because our team was mighty and small, but we delighted and conquered. My team and I went to 12 classrooms in three different schools, and the other team did the same. And we used the protocol, and people knew we were coming, it was non-evaluative. But it was for us to test out the rubric.
The look fours.
The look fours, yes, the UDL look fours, and culturally responsive, all that. So, that stuff is growing in the background of the work, and it's hard to make it visible to everyone this year, especially in this first year, but my intention is to be, is to try to be more transparent about the work that's being done, now that I know what the work is going to look like.
And one of the things we've been talking about is just the notion of going slow to go fast, right?
I know.
Because I know even our, you know, when we were doing the work with Mirko, like even the leadership team, you know, halfway through was getting overwhelmed, thinking like, wait, what is our, what is our, when do we think, when do we have expectations for this to actually be something that we see in the classrooms? And we were able to talk with them, and McGauley was able to remind them that when we look at the district improvement plan, it's a multi-year.
Yes.
Right, and so, we know that, because we've been talking about that, but we have to, we have to make sure that we're consistently communicating that to the teachers, if they were afraid that, wait, we're going to be expected to be doing this next year. No, that's not the case.
Yeah, and it's going to be differentiated, because it's like, when? They're going to get what they need, and my support for them will be differentiated per school building. At the end of this year, I do intend to have meetings with all the principals to look at their school improvement plans and just talk to them about, you know, where they think they need support in. Next year, I'm also going to offer the UDL 101 course. We had seven people sign up this summer, and then seven in the fall, so I worked with them to try to just do it all in the fall, so that we have a good cohort, because we need, I think we need 12 people to run a University of Westford course. But we did get some interest, which was good. And then as I, you know, we had that, the priority for the sustainability, and we had that meeting, like, that helped me hash this out, like, my brain was firing that day, and I finally understood the connection, having had that presentation from her. So there are a couple of pieces there. Some stuff is grayed out on this, because it's going to the next year, or the next level. But if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them at any time at your convenience. We continue to translate and update the website periodically, and I just feel like I've landed where I'm supposed to be. And I'm so happy to be here and working with such wonderful leaders. And I'm sad that, Carrie, I only got to work with you for like, nine months, but I'm telling you, in nine months, you have left quite an impact. On me as an individual and as a professional, so thank you. But that's, the work is a lot, but it's fun, it's interesting, and it's never doubt.
Thank you. And thank you for, I mean, I feel like we know you better now, and that's kind of nice. I felt like we got a nice introduction last year, and then throughout the year, but this was really nice. And so, thanks for kind of that wrap-up of the year. I'm opening, I want to open it, I have some questions, but I'll open it to the rest of the committee first.
Go for it, Chris.
Okay, I was going to ask, like, what are you excited about for next year? And do we have any previews on like, professional development and things like that?
So for next year, I'm going to do the UDL piece for the coursework. I think what we're going to do with UDL is continue that work, but we're just going to look and dig into the engagement principle, which is the first column, and really unpack, because what we're learning is people think of engagement in different ways, right? So we need to, we need to have a concept stabilization of what you mean about engagement, what you mean about, we all need to be speaking the same thing. So throughout next year, the plan is to dig deeper into the engagement principle. I'm not sure if we're going to get Mirko back, depending on the title funds, but I do have, the next book is one of their books that talks about student-centered teaching through the UDL lens. So that's, I ordered one of those, I'm going to look at it and see, is that something we want to use as another book study next year? The work that we're doing with the Equity in Action Group with DESI, that will continue next year, and next year, that's when we'll refine the rubric and test it out. They're going to do another test run this Thursday, in visiting schools. I will not be there unfortunately, because my daughter is graduating or doing her move-up ceremony. But the team is awesome, and the consultant that we have was actually, I think, the assistant principal with Mirko. Yeah. So, and she has found, she, like, we have a good base in the engagement, so we looked at the engagement at different levels, and what we're finding here is that we're at the strategic, like, the compliance engagement, which is not a bad place to be, because our kids know how to do school. Our kids do well in the school, in the school district. But how can we leverage more promising practices to kind of release the responsibility onto the students? It's going to start with engagement. How do we engage them and make things more relevant? So I see our PD next year really focusing on that piece. And then, some of the expectations, like, for example, building the awareness, you know, just asking, you know, teaching people, what are the UDL look fours in a classroom? Can we start saying, hey, let's name it, so people start to put those concepts together, what it actually is? I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, thank you.
A lot to think about.
I know, there's so much. That must be how you feel, like, there's just so much.
It is, and, you know, in the role, the role is so big that I feel like I have like, maybe 15 or 20 projects up in the air, which is fine, because that keeps me going. But it's the coordination of all those projects, because it's ELL, it's homeschool, it's curriculum. Pre-K, I'm trying to pull in, even though the role says K to 12, pre-K is their part of our brick and mortar. And so, I've been working with them to look at their standard-based report card and build it up, so that I, next year, I will look at the kindergarten standard-based report card, because we want to make sure that what's on the report card is, are like, the real estate there is small, and it should be the most powerful standards or concepts and skills, so we're developing that.
It's not going to be done overnight.
No, no, building the ship while you're flying is not, is a challenge. But, you know, I've learned so much working here, and I really want to just let folks know that I do see a lot of the strength in this district, and I also see where we can lift some other groups up, just based on the data.
I have a follow-up question that kind of like straddles the two presentations we just saw, which, since you've been so collaborative with the ELL folks, some of what, I kind of work in the community here with these community centers, and so, like, there's a lot of folks that will only come for one touch, right? Like, you will only see them one time. And there are some folks, like, you all are trying to create, you know, this continuity of this group that will eventually take over the ALPAC. What is your feeling, and you're not collecting data about this, so I'm just going to ask you, like, what's your feeling about the sense of belonging that folks feel in the community? And do you feel like the reception that you're seeing at the ALPAC meetings would be similar to the way that folks feel comfortable participating in like, other?
That's a, that, for me, when I came here as a new member of this community, I felt like, wow, I feel, I felt valued, I felt like I was worthy, I didn't feel like an imposter, like, I felt like I was welcomed. In working with Amy and with some of the principals, what I'm hearing is that some families are asking, like, do we do affinity groups? And affinity groups would be like, parent meetings, and we, you know, Portuguese is here, you know, other languages are here, and I've done that before at my school. They are looking for those types of venues.
Opportunities.
Yeah, yeah, and, and they also, we also have to do a better job of communicating with the EL or MLL families of why it's important to fill out the home language survey with complete honesty. And what I, what we're hearing is that they don't, because they, we need to educate them more on what our ESL programming is, so that they feel comfortable filling out that form and saying, yes, my child speaks English to me, but these are all the languages that they're hearing at home.
Are you saying because of stigma, or are you saying because folks feel like they don't want their child to be pulled out for like, what they might consider less valuable instructions?
I think it's a combination of both. I think that they don't want their child to be singled out, but I think it's also us educating them about the value of English language development, and also sharing our beliefs in asset-based thinking and growth mindset, which goes nicely with UDL, that we do value their languages and their culture. It's, the ELL department and I, we need to work on that, like, how do we educate them?
So I'm going to submit to you that the way that you might do that is through affinity groups, right? So it's the same thing that you see in a lot of times, special education community or like, P-Pow, which is that if you build trust with folks in the community, then they will be the advocates for you, and you will not have to do the convincing.
Thank you.
It's just a thought that I offered you.
So that's something that, you know, was mentioned and asked a principal, and I was, no, we don't, but that's something that we should consider.
Because if you're thinking about, that's, you know, that may, what you need is people to feel trust.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. That's, I'll put that on the ELL agenda for next year, too.
Thank you for your answers.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Before we let McGauley go, thank you so much.
Oh, you're welcome.
We appreciated your time this late. And it's always good to see you.
I don't, I'm not here often.
I feel like we make you come a fair amount, but we like, we like it, though. Thanks.
Thank you so much, McGauley.
It's a good time to remind people, we love having an audience. It's nine, you could go if you wanted to. We won't look, you sneak out. Good night. Okay. Nobody else can leave. I'm not even going to talk about what it was originally. White-out. We're going to look at the job description now for the...
Checking in with the babysitter.
Yeah, exactly, for the newly titled role. Sure. And if Courtney wants to come up and join us?
Please. So the first thing I just want to talk about is, taking, taking the feedback from the last conversation, we made adjustments. One of the things that we did is we looked at, we looked at the format that you've already approved with, well, with McGauley's position, right, so the Director of Equity, Curriculum, and Instruction. And then, the, so we, this committee, we had already kind of looked at a job description last year specifically, and we adjusted the Assistant Superintendent position, we didn't change necessarily the format in the same way. One has a summary, and one does not. So we looked at this, and we tried to organize it in the same manner. And then, when we looked at the attributes and qualifications, based on, again, what I was saying last time, when we were talking about the Lawrence Alexander work, that he was working with us about trying to not necessarily put in gates, if you will, you know, and encourage people to continue reading and thinking of it as an asset, the growth mindset and being more asset-focused, we flipped and had the attributes first. So right now, what we've presented to you is, I think, the priorities of those attributes that then lead to the qualifications. And so, we used even verbs specifically in the, in the attributes, and not necessarily in the qualifications. We had looked at the, oh, one of the things, as I shared with you in an email, just the idea of shifting the title and considering Director of Special Education and Social-Emotional Learning. I think, similar to what we actually just heard from McGauley, and that when we even looked at that, the title and taking the equity lens and putting it with curriculum and instruction, we weren't necessarily sure exactly how that was going to play out, but we believe that that was a nice place to have that focus. I believe in the same way, having social-emotional learning attached with the Director of Special Education, isn't expecting that person to lead all of that work or be responsible for developing all of it, as much as it's asking us to have that specific lens. And again, these members being at the table, in the cabinet, as we're having these conversations. I had had one parent reach out to me and expressed a concern with the title change. And one of the things I shared was just that the superintendent is the chief equity officer in the district. I have not outsourced equity to McGauley. Just like, I think, I think I'm responsible for social-emotional well-being and learning of all of our students, and so I'm not looking to outsource that responsibility, as much as have, have it connected with the supports that often, when you look at our counselors and our nurses, have been the primary first responder support for social-emotional resources in the buildings, even beyond when we're talking about the, you know, the spirit classes and the things that we're trying to put into the classrooms. Those individuals who have been part of our pupil services have already been doing a lot of this work. So that's sort of the mindset behind that, is that as a district, we believe both of these things are incredibly important. And so, if we actually highlight them in titles, I think we're signaling their importance as well, too. So that was sort of the purpose there. Catherine had shared with us a great example from another district, and we looked at those first two performance responsibilities, and those had come from another district's language specifically, under the performance responsibilities, layered out, sorry, I'm looking at it, and I scrolled and forgot that I wasn't doing that. So the, oh, it's a different color on my screen. So the one and two... So the one and two there, those are new additions. The rest, when I read through it, it was pretty similar. One of the things that we had, some feedback that, um, that we had had even when we started looking at this was trying to make it less regulatory in nature. So I know to Danielle's question earlier about it doesn't say IEP anywhere on here, that was intentional. That wasn't an oversight. The idea being is that we're trying to make it less about the regulatory language and more about what the overall responsibilities are. And so since we do know that compliance, following and maintaining compliance with all federal and state special education law and regulations, that includes the appropriate development of IEPs. So that's the reason there. One other change that, that we did make here is when we were talking about it is that our language had said ages three to 22 and it's really more appropriate to be three to 21 because at 22, they, that's actually when a student ages out of our support. So it's not through that 22nd. So that's, that's sort of the bulk of those changes that we've presented. And I don't know if Carrie or Courtney, if you want, if, if there's anything that I misspoke or you want to add to.
I think you captured everything.
So then if you have questions, I mean thoughts, I actually thought there were a couple of things that, that, that were mentioned. I know, um, even in the public comment Danielle's mentioned about the word inclusive environment. I'm like, I, I think that makes sense and it doesn't, it, it does just add more specific language to what we're, what we're doing there. So if that's something, I did feel like some part of this would be wordsmithing live together.
Yeah. I, I had noted that too.
Or you have a PDF, don't you? So you can't.
I cannot.
That's me then.
And that was, um.
It was in number one.
It was in number one.
The suggestion was in order to create an inclusive environment.
Yeah.
Do we like, just general consensus?
General consensus.
That sounds really good.
That was an excellent addition.
Other, other thoughts on it in general?
I just appreciate the time that's been put into it. I think it reads very differently to, to what we initially had, so thank you. I know it's been, um, a fast and furious process.
It's really evolved.
But it's completely evolved. Because I think, you know, you're always going to look for somebody who has to do all the compliance stuff, the legal stuff, but really what this does is give a sense of who we are as a district and, and who's the type of person that we're hoping to find to fit into central office and, and take on this role. So I, I think you're capturing, I think the one thing, I think that just to also note that has kind of come to me through various conversations is some, um, families' concerns that, um, we would hire somebody that isn't somewhat qualified or experienced within that, um, kind of therapeutic counselor background. And so I think that's something maybe as you're going through the hiring process to just be mindful of that, um, if we're putting that social and emotional lens on it, that, um, you know, there's, there's a straddling. I mean, I, I've seen districts where they have like psychol, kind of psychology backgrounds or social worker backgrounds or whatever, so I know they exist, but, um, I think it's just something to be mindful of as we go through the process.
Can you, can you remind us, did, did the job been posted provisionally?
Anticipated.
Anticipated.
So it's been posted, anticipated. As of this afternoon, we've already have nine, nine applications.
And that has a title? What else is included in that? A district?
In the posting?
Yeah.
So the posting, it has a brief, um, a, a brief summary to it. Can we?
I've seen it actually.
Yeah. It says that the job description is, I don't know if it says pending, but it says, but it's going to be updated. So we've clearly said that it would be updated.
Can you check the salary range on that for some reason?
I don't think the, I don't think the posting has a salary range.
It didn't, but in the kind of the search part of it, it was showing a salary range. It looked, it looked like to me like it was reading that, it was almost like Google was kind of guesstimating based on, on others and it was putting it at a lower, a lower end.
We intentionally don't put a, a posted salary range with any of our positions really.
When I was doing kind of a Google job search and it was coming up through that in a kind of a small gray box, it was putting, I think was.
That's interesting.
That's Google AI working.
Yeah, I don't know if we can do that. Cause I don't think the school, we'll verify, cause the school spring, the school spring posting itself doesn't have it.
No, the postings itself didn't have it, but I was possibly not unless you put in.
That's AI making a decision for you.
I'm just wondering if you put in the, the salary range then in the posting, does that kind of change the, the Google?
Can I, can I ask you, um, you said you intentionally don't post the salary. Can I ask why?
Um, actually, it's a good question. We just had it.
Because there is a trend in diversity, equity and inclusion to include salaries in job descriptions because the idea being that, you know, there's more transparency around salary. So it's a trend towards.
Okay.
Not against. So I just didn't know because you're like, we intentionally don't.
We just had, we just, we don't do that with any of our positions, so that's a good question.
I think it's like, uh, you know, we're internally in our own organization where we're doing DI work, we started posting.
We certainly could because you see tonight that we've considered a range and that's actually, we put the range even on the salaries for you to look at tonight, so we could.
And I think that's consistent with other state jobs and stuff, like the Commonwealth does that, they put a range.
Commonwealth lists everybody's salary.
Yeah, yeah, but they put a range and then commensurate with experience, so.
I think I'm looking at what Catherine just noted and it says 55 to 170. Is that what it is?
That's a big range. Fifty-five to 170? Wow, that's a big range.
Can I apply?
And it just showed up when you?
Yeah, it's like a little box, like.
Yeah, I, it was a slightly different range, but it was something, I mean, I kind of dived into it a bit.
I wonder if we did put the range.
It was from like I hire school administrators.
At least it would be accurate.
But it's kind of like, it almost looks like an ad box. It doesn't, it doesn't.
Yeah, it's not overwhelming.
Yeah, it doesn't feel like it's part of it.
I hire school administrators dot com. You should go to the true source, okay?
Oh, I did, I went to school spring too.
I'm going to keep us on track.
We're all going through Googling.
It's important to see what other people are seeing.
Well, that, that was my whole thing. I was like, if, if, if somebody saw Director of Special Education and they even glanced at that, it just wouldn't.
Well, it's a big enough range that there's something there for everybody. Like everyone can see themselves almost in that range.
So, anyway.
I think it's worth, since we're on this subject, um, Chris, maybe you can just remind the public what the next steps are, uh, in terms of the, uh, the committee and the like.
Yep. So we, so, um, Dr. Cleary sent something to all the staff last week, uh, just before sending everything to the parents in the update to solicit participation and interest to participate in the advisory committee. Our, our goal was to, we asked people to hold the dates next week, the 14th, 15th and 16th, um, available in the afternoon for interviews. So that's our goal. Like I said, we wanted, we, we, we had actually applicants on Friday last week. We have nine applicants, um, right now. I've, I have had, um, people from other districts express interest and was kind of curious about the job description. Um, so I already know that I think we'll, we'll be seeing more and more applicants through the week. So I feel like the idea of being able to continue with that timeline is realistic.
Can you remind us, um, the, the seats on the committee?
I can.
So I'm, I was just looking at that and, um, realizing there is an oversight on my part in that school committee, a school committee member is not represented and we have been doing that for central office positions as well as principals. So that, that's on me, I apologize for that. If there's anybody, so I'll name the, um, the committee in just a moment, but if there's somebody on the committee who's available for those dates through Chris, uh, we would love to have a member of this committee as well, which we have been doing, so. We have two central office administrators who will participate, a principal, two student support leader slash APs, assistant principals, be, and the assistant principals are specific to the elementary because they take on the student support leader work as well. Three staff members, the CPAC chair and an additional two parents, parents who are caregivers.
I appreciate that, the mention of a seat for a school committee member. Does it feel big? Is that what we've had for, okay.
It is big.
It is big. It is big.
Okay. So just brought Catherine up because she.
Sorry, you're looking for a school committee member. Well, I will throw my hat in the ring if you are looking for one.
But then we're asking, is the, is the advisory committee, at, at what point is it like too large? Is it unwieldy? So.
How many did you have for the last ones, like last year?
It's, it's been typically like less than 10.
Right. It has been 10, 10 or 11. I think the level of interest that has been shared in the fact that it's, right.
Usually when we're doing a principal, it's one grade level. So you don't have, you don't have the range. You don't have as many parents or as many staff members trying to cover the range. So this is more similar and, you know, it can be daunting for the person who's interviewing, but then we just work harder to make sure that we're creating a welcoming environment.
Right. And I think from a, from a, um, parent or caregiver point of view, we wanted to make sure that we had room for a, a subgroup of that population, like making sure an out-of-district representative is, is there and part of the team as well, which would be different from, you know, needing to break out the parent category into subcategories, for example. So we thought that this, this would include more people given, you know, the nature of the special education side of things.
Yeah, I, I think, I think a big committee is to be expected with a job of this magnitude. I don't think, you know, we're not hiring someone to be like a substitute teacher. Like this is a, just a really important job, but it's not the kind of job that requires like a 10-person committee.
It's also in the middle of a very kind of, of like changing time within special education as well, so you can kind of see.
It makes sense for a school committee member to be included.
Any other questions, comments on the job description? We've got one edit to it, which you've already made.
I made it.
Live.
Oh, that's true, it's not in there, but it's on the document.
Okay.
Motion to approve the job description for Director of Special Education and Social Emotional Learning as amended.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, great, that's six oh. Thank you so much.
So Kathy, can we make sure that we post the amended version in the packet?
Fantastic.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Okay, we have our non-union personnel salary approvals for next year. Thank you, Courtney.
She's getting used to Monday nights again.
Yeah, that's true. Welcome to Monday!
This is an extra special.
Yeah, they're not all this long.
I closed it, so I need to open it.
Sure.
I do want to say that what you are seeing is a reflection of a 2% increase. There are a couple of, there are a couple of positions that don't change because those people either started later or there was a reason that that, that, that they just weren't going to get a specific increase at this moment in time. And then, uh, once I find it, here it is. Okay, sorry. We tried to make sure, in the past, we haven't always had it lined up in the same way, like you clearly can see that Ms. Balf, who will be the, the principal at NAB, she is listed on here. Ms. Dubois is actually not retiring until August. So, I mean, she, she will still be working into FY, uh, I mean, July, after July 1st, FY '24. And, um, we have a very unceremoniously and rudely deleted Dr. Cleary.
I saw that. Feel like he's kicking you out the door, Carrie there, yeah.
Honestly, it was just easier at that moment, time we were looking. Jenny and I were looking, I'm like, well, you can do this and then put this here, but I wanted to reflect everything. So I said, Carrie will understand.
It makes sense.
Just make sure you're on the payroll in Belrika for it next.
Chris, briefly, uh, teachers or staff members who could theoretically be part of a union who aren't listed on this, they just get salary bumps in conjunction with, um, whatever negotiated rates are, correct?
Whatever the negotiated contract is.
For the collectively bargained due, right?
Correct. So these are all non-collectively bargained individual contracts.
Right, right. So if there's someone who could theoretically be part of a union but has elected not to for whatever reason.
Oh, they're still part of the collectively bargained contract.
Exactly.
Even, yeah, that's correct, thank you. If they're, if they have, if they have decided not to join the union, they're still protected under the collectively bargained and they're still, they still follow the same, um, pay scale and salary that, that the contract.
Hence why they're not listed here.
Correct.
Okay, correct. Thank you.
Yep. Other questions?
Motion to approve the non-union personnel 2023 to 2024 salaries.
Second.
All in favor? Six oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, last item under business is superintendent evaluation. Gloria, come up and join us at a microphone. Hi Gloria. Yeah, come on up.
For old times.
Right where we left you.
So everything's in the packet. We, um, just process-wise, the, you know, we're, we're learning as we go, you know, I think we have made great strides in the process and trying to be more, um, have a repetitive, repeatable, not repetitive, repeatable process. And we've got a superintendent evaluation subcommittee, that's helped. It's been great that we were able to meet with you at the beginning of the year, look at goals and then to come full circle at the end of the year. And I think there's just more that we'll be able to do next year as well to get even better at it. So that's just kind of the process stuff out of the way. But we did, per best practices, pull the individual evaluations and try to have a single evaluation, like we did last year, that speaks with one voice, um, for the committee. And that's what you see is the composite evaluation.
Which is the recommendation kind of from the state and it's best practice.
We weren't, we weren't as a committee doing that prior. And so that was sort of last year, I think, literally in the middle of the process, we realized that this is what we should be doing and, and I, I think it makes a lot of sense. And so hopefully you've seen that.
I have, yep. And they're, I mean, they're all, they are all included.
They're all included.
Part of the packet.
Right.
But you're right, having one official document with, that, it makes sense.
And they're all included, that's, you know, they're all work products of the, of the evaluation process, so they really want you to keep them all in there.
Right.
But, um, but just, I mean, kind of highlights, I think the general consensus was it was a really good year and, you know, we met, you met goals and, and I think, you know, some of the highlights being the S-DIP obviously and how that just sets the tone for the district. And there was general sense of, a sense of cohesion across the district with that. When we saw the school improvement plans, I think a lot of people highlighted that as really important that you could feel that that was, that vision is being propagated down through all of the schools and the leadership in the buildings and that's so important going forward.
Can I jump in for a second?
Yes, please do.
I was struck by that and, and our comments all reflected that during the SIP, um, presentations. But what I was pleasantly surprised by is that it's like literally called out in the standards, right? Like align district and school goals, align, you know, that vertical alignment that just sort of felt organic and like, oh, this is a good idea. Was like, wait, this is actually best practice too. So I thought that was just really great.
Yep. I think we talked a little bit about budget. I think we've had tough budget seasons for a number of years and we appreciate your leadership on that. And that's something that the public doesn't necessarily see, we see the meetings here, but there's meetings with, you know, there's, um, meeting.
Finance subcommittee?
Yeah, finance subcommittee, select board meetings and not everybody necessarily seeing. And so I think the way you've led us through that and worked with, um, the district, but also with the town partners, um, it's been great this year and.
Well, we have a great team.
Yep. Um, other comments that people want to highlight? I mean, this is an opportunity to highlight things if you'd like, if there are things you'd like to pull out and highlight. We will also be taking a vote on the, on the composite evaluation. I don't know if that's the best word, I keep calling it composite, but that's what we're doing.
Yep.
Um, there's, if there are things that we feel like need to be looked at there, if there's a wording change that somebody has, you are welcome to propose those sorts of things, right? Like this is, this is the evaluation that we're going to be voting on. But I want to offer, kind of open it up for, for folks to just add two cents or maybe, maybe you feel like it, it stands alone and.
I mean, I feel like Gloria should, if she wants to add anything, she came all this way. Stuck it up. Give her a mic.
Well, and, and.
Well, and, and you made it, you made it late, just so I feel, you know.
Fashionably late.
Like the good old days.
Like the good old days, exactly. Yeah, thank you for having me back. You know, for anybody watching at home, it is our, our tradition, I guess, to have outgoing members return for this purpose since we've been here, you know, for the whole year. So thank you for having me back. And, you know, my comments are, are included in the packet. But I would like to, to commend the efforts on the composite. I mean, I read through the composite and thought that was really well done. And I think that this process of bringing together to one voice for the committee, while I guess I don't get to vote on it tonight, I will comment that, that I think that's, that's a great process to have. And I think it was very well done. And I think it does provide kind of a clear summary to the community on, on the year and the direction of the district and the evaluation of the superintendent, which is one of our three primary responsibilities. So, or your, I keep having to change my pronouns, your responsibilities. But I, I, I thought the composite was really well done. So kudos to all of you and kudos to you on a great year. And kudos to you on moving on. And I, I think Courtney may have stepped out of the room, but kudos to. It's, I knew it was going to happen really quickly, that things were going to happen on the committee, that I was going to be like, oh, wow, I wish I was there for that discussion and that vote. And I just didn't expect it to happen like three weeks in. I was like, wow, that's exciting. So exciting things are happening. And I think the district is in good hands moving forward. So I, I wish you all well.
Thank you.
I just want to say, I think what was really nice as we were, we were going through the composite based on last year. Not only obviously had we, we had streamlined the process and I think had our heads wrapped around the whole thing a lot better. But it was really refreshing to see how putting a structure and, and kind of, you know, a better handle on the goals and the benchmarks and evidence and stuff. I, I felt like we could have picked up any of our evaluations and they reflected pretty much what everybody else, you know, was thinking in terms of, we all saw the strengths, you know, some kind of areas, you know, continued to continue with goals next year. So it was really nice to see that the process is kind of working and, and that we're getting a lot more clarity from it. And I think it sets us up again really nicely to kind of take this and, and plan out our goals now for next year and to keep that momentum going. I think I said it to Chris and I can't remember if I explicitly said it in the report, but that sense of belonging, belonging is, is such a massive task to achieve, you know. And really it's not a one-year goal. So we, we've got momentum on it. But I, I'm recommending that we consider that goal again for student learning.
It has to become part of our true fabric, right? So it has to be, it's, that's an enduring, forever focus.
Yeah. So, no, it was, it, it, it felt a lot easier somewhat this year to do than, than last year. It wasn't as, as big as ever. But we'll keep going.
I was going to add that the document does a great job, the composite does a great job of sort of the, the highlights, right, and the like wins, right? So I, I hate to feel like my, I'm adding on with the opportunities. But one thing I was thinking about as I was going through this was how great to get, how great it might be to get to a place where we're talking about this in one meeting and the very next meeting is discussion about goals. Even like a proposed brainstorming about them or something. Because I feel like some of the things that, as you go through this, it's so fresh to be like, evidence and all those things are really like so on the tips of our tongues as we're going through this process that, to, to separate them so much. So I was thinking about maybe even it's, could be like an item on our retreat agenda or something to, to have that.
I think that is part of the, that's sort of the idea in the policy.
Yeah, right, right. I just want to reiterate that.
We do reflect on it in that, in that it, yeah, that it doesn't, I mean, it, it's not a lot of time. You know what I mean? Because it is really, we're talking about at the very beginning of next school year, we're going to have goals. You know, we're going to have them articulated again. But I do think that's one of the things we talked about with the policy is that it's then the expectation is that whether it's at the retreat, or at least it's in the summer, makes sense to be during the retreat, that there is dedicated conversation about this. There's not a necessary expectation to have the new goals ready at that moment in time. But to be, to be looking at it, I think is.
Because two, two things that jumped out at me when I think about next year are that mentorship, right? Since we are going to have more transitions in central office and what that evidence looks like for that, right? And how to make that a more, more of an objective process, evaluation process for that. Because some of that just isn't public.
It's challenging.
Right.
Can I say, Val, on that very note, I actually reached out to Alicia, our former colleague, who's now, what's it called, neck deep in MASC on that very issue. And because we can't be the only district because this is obviously a DESI document and guidelines. And she said that's something that MASC have been having kind of the conversation as well. And she will happily look into it a bit more in terms of how, if, if those kind of areas for evaluation are there, how can the school committee members, we can kind of evaluate that area. So stay tuned.
Well, one of the things that I, I don't remember if it's in the composite, but I think Valerie, you might have mentioned it in your, in your specific document was, you know, is there, is there room for a conversation, for me to be having a conversation with leadership to develop an agreed understanding as to what evidence could look like? Because it does become a personnel thing. So therefore, that's where there will be a moment where it's like, nope. So then the question is, is wait a second, can the leadership team come up with an agreed, you know, agreed, agreed evidence or agreed, you know, benchmarks that, that they, that we think we could be, they'd be comfortable sharing.
And just to add on to that, I, I know it was mentioned in the composite under this communication standard. And I applaud this year's work in communication. And it felt like we had these pillars of STIP and feasibility study. And so I just wanted to, I got a little worried thinking like, okay, well, we don't have an STIP planned next year.
So what will it be?
Right. And so I just want to raise that up as a continued point of emphasis.
We do have year one though of the STIP and kind of creating that annual plan.
And we are creating a master plan too.
There'll be no shortage of.
That was something we had talked about this year is that we had these authentic things already on the plate.
Authentic. Thank you for that word.
So the question is, is do those exist as well? Or do we need to make sure that we find additional opportunities?
We'll also have hopefully the equity audit as well, which I think will be.
Speaking of which, Select Board meeting tomorrow night. ARPA, ARPA funding. But sorry.
Last, last.
Off topic.
Other comments? I know we've talked a lot about process. We've made it about us somehow, instead of about you, but maybe that's okay.
That's okay. I'm 100% okay with this. Because it's one of those things where it's like, I'm happy to get the document, happy to read the document, happy for you to vote on the document. Talking about it's weird.
Yeah. You don't want me to read the whole thing right now?
I'll, I guess in the absence of more discussion, I will make a motion to.
I'm not, wait, I'm not, I didn't think we were done.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, no.
I didn't think we were done because you didn't say final comments on the document.
No, yeah, please.
I think I, I, I'm really glad to partner with you in this work. And I think that I would be remiss if I didn't mention that I've gotten a lot of feedback from families about the vote last week with regard to the position that ended up being filled last week through a short order. And so I, I understand that we discuss a lot of equity and there was a mention in the report about unexpected absences. But in most work, absences are unexpected, right? And I understand that in school committee, in school years, most of the time, you know, we have more of a foreshadowing of who's going to move on and what have you. But if we're really talking about equity and hiring, like there's going to be unexpected situations. That's actually very foreseeable. And so I just think it's important to give that voice because I've gotten a lot of feedback, both jointly and separately, about the voice last week, about the vote last week. So I wanted to make sure that I said that. I don't like to have like one situation overshadow the whole year. Like that's not, I think, an important thing to do. At the same time, it was important enough that a lot of folks reached out. So I feel like I would be remiss if I didn't mention it.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
Because I was about to say, any, any more comments? It's okay. You can make a motion if you want. That's the beauty of Robert's rules.
Yeah, you told again.
Anything else? Okay. Well, appreciate every, I do, it's not an easy process. Good to talk about process again. The form hasn't been easy. Hopefully having an editable form was a little easier this year that we didn't have to like put stuff in the PDP.
If I get to say one more thing, the form was just way better. I cried over the form last year and there were no, there were no tears over the form this year. The form, thank you for the form. Future school committee members will appreciate that form.
I know, but like maybe they need a version of that.
And I, I just appreciate the committee members because I know, I mean, I've been doing this how many years? And I open up that form and I'm like, oh, yeah, this, this thing again. And so I know it's sort of, you open it up and you're like, okay, here we go. Like it's, it's, it's not, I don't know, it's not super conducive to getting in the mind space, I think, for doing a thoughtful evaluation because you're dealing with just trying to process it all. So thank you to everyone for the comments and for the work on that. It's important. And, you know, I think we have something that captures the, kind of the, the sense of the committee and one voice. And I appreciate that. Any comments? Last comments you want to make?
No, I, I appreciate, like I, I mean, I said it last year, I, I don't like this process. But I signed up for it. So it is what it is. But I think the process was much better this year. I agree with all that. I just think there, you know, I just, there are very few things where you're going to have people sit there and talk about you publicly. So I'm like, it's just weird.
At least it's only once a year.
That's right. That's right.
All right. Well, thank you.
Yeah, no, I, I think, I think it was all smoother. I've, I appreciated having the working group, whether we call it a subcommittee or whatever. But the working group, I think that definitely is something that we need to keep doing. And maybe even add like an additional, you know, I mean, like we met and then we didn't meet for a long time. One of the things we talked about doing, which we didn't necessarily do, was we'd actually talked about making sure that every agenda. Because I think if you look at all of our agendas throughout the year, you will see that we talked about most of the goals all year, but we didn't actually.
Call them out.
Call them out on the agenda. So I think that's something we could, we could do a better job.
To the huge agenda territory.
I think we might too. I mean, what font size are we on now?
The other thing I did suggest to Chris as well, that maybe we might consider looking at actually creating a template for the goals and a template for kind of the self-evaluation. So again, that it all kind of aligns with the, feeds into each other. So again, that it's easier and kind of puts us all on the same page and maybe even sets us up really well for that mid-year check-in. So I think that's kind of hopefully, you know, we might discuss that a bit more. Whoever, sorry, is on that subcommittee next year.
While I'm sitting near a mic, if, if I can throw in, there, there has been discussion at the League of Women Voters about how to improve community understanding of, of what transpires at meetings. Like maybe not, not everyone's at every meeting. But one thing that a lot of people like is the Select Board Actions Taken Agenda. When they post like their second agenda, so when they have votes and when they have actions taken, it gets kind of in a different color, like annotated. And, you know, the league has, has suggested, you know, that, that if other boards did that, that would be very helpful. Because it's just a quick and easy way for the community to get a notice of that agenda and look at that Actions Taken Agenda from Select Board and see what happened at last night's meeting without necessarily watching a three-hour meeting. So that might be if, if you're thinking about agenda formatting and adding things like goals, it'd be an interesting thing to consider.
We'll have some agenda fun.
Motion to approve the superintendent's annual evaluation for the school year 2022, 2023.
Second.
Okay. Any last discussion? All in favor? Six oh.
Resist urge to.
I know. I, I was ignoring it either way. So, but I imagine that's difficult. Thank you, Gloria. Nice to have you here.
Sure.
I'll be doing this at some point too.
What's it like on the other side, Gloria?
We're getting close to shrinking that gap between how far we've gone over.
I know. We're, right? We always do that.
Like we're making up some time, so we can.
It's like the 90/10 roll or whatever. You're like.
You're bombing it right now.
Personnel update, it's in the packet. I don't know if there's any that we wanted to highlight or point out.
Can I ask?
Except that there are a bunch of kids my son graduated with in here, which I guess that's a new thing to put the substitute. I'm like, those are all 20-year-olds.
Right. But, but sub additions are much needed and when we see those on here, it's fantastic.
Good job, guys.
Can I ask a question actually, just in the bigger sense of the, of the personnel? You know, as, when you get to kind of the spring and you're starting, we're starting to look at classes for the following year. And, you know, we, we've obviously in the middle of doing some kind of staff shifts and changes across the district, depending on where we need staffing. Is there a cutoff? Because, you know, in terms of, okay, anybody who is potentially planning to retire, at least, you know, has some notice, is there a cutoff point about when they have to kind of send in their intentions or notice in advance? So that we have a fuller picture of where the gaps maybe are as we're kind of trying to figure out staffing, who still want to stay in the district and.
There, there is, there is some timelines that impact when they might be able to access any, you know, sick time buyback, things like that. And then of course, the process of retiring, they have to go, especially if they're part of the MTRS, they have to do so much paperwork to be ready then to have access to their benefits when they want to retire. So they have to back it up. But there's, outside of that, there's no like legal requirement for us to do something. So we, we try to be proactive, you know, we will not, we'll kindly ask people, you know, if you are aware or thinking of that. But even like with things like lane changes and things like that, like if they know that they're going to be getting more coursework, that they might get their master's degree or master's, like we ask people to, you know, give us that information as early as possible so we can plan for it. But there's no real timelines that, or deadlines that, that would do that. And sometimes you do find people who, they do, they make those decisions later. And that's only, I mean, then there's always, there's always, if somebody, you know, has a life change and they make a decision to do something else, that's always different. But does that help?
Yeah. No, it was just, it was, kind of came up in conversation and I was like, you know, I actually don't really kind of know.
Probably if, for people who are retiring, the most difficult piece is getting all of your retirement paperwork. Because then you have to go through MTRS and or the, thank you, the middle sex retirement as well too. Like there's just all of these things that have to be documented, that have to be taken care of before you can officially start collecting benefits.
Good info. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you all. It's a late one.